Good evening. I call the regular Planning Commission meeting to order at 6:30 PM. Today is Thursday, July 19th, and we are located here in the City Council chambers at City Hall. Thank you all for joining us tonight. I'm going to start with roll call on my right.
Rosina Farrell.
Rituja Indapurie.
Shannon Collins.
Jane Garrison.
Mark Baughman.
Eric Brooks.
Okay, so there are six of us tonight. We are missing Larry Crandall, and it's due to a medical issue. He's not -- well, actually, he's just in a lot of pain tonight. So, sorry to Larry and hope he gets better soon. So, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. So, it looks like we have a lot of people to speak tonight. I would like to see a show of hands who would like to speak on housing tonight. Everybody's here for housing. Okay. So, Commissioners, we can amend the agenda however we want to incorporate their comments. We can have them all speak during the non-agenda public comment. That would probably be helpful instead of going into deliberations first because we want to hear what they have to say before we deliberate. So, I can entertain a motion, or I will entertain a motion to do something of that sort.
So, move.
Hmm.
No?
Try.
How do I say that?
I move to allow agenda-specific public comment during the non-agenda.
I move to allow agenda-specific comment during the non-agenda comment period.
Correct. Yeah. Need a second.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to allow agenda-specific public comment during the non-agenda public comment section. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say no. Okay, so you will all be able to speak during the non-agenda section, but you can speak on the agenda topic, which is housing tonight. So, the next item of business.
Chair Collins.
Yes.
I'm sorry. For clarification, a public comment on an agenda item per our commission bylaws is seven minutes per person.
Right.
So, I do want to.
I was going to say that. So, I should have -- everyone should be able to speak seven minutes during that time, right? Okay. So, you get seven minutes during the non-agenda public comment time, and that will be the only time for public comment this evening. Is that correct?
Yeah.
So, that will be the only time to speak. So, each person can speak for seven minutes during that time. Okay. The next item of business is -- oh, I guess we should approve the rest of the agenda. Anyone?
I move to approve the rest of the agenda.
A second.
Second.
There is a motion and a second to approve the remainder of the agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. And I think I forgot to say aye, so I say aye. Then, next item of business is the approval of the minutes. Are there any amendments to the July 5th regular meeting Planning Commission minutes? I don't have any.
No.
No?
Nope.
Okay.
I move to approve the agenda meeting -- or meeting minutes for July 5th.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the meeting minutes for July 5th for the regular Planning Commission meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say no. Okay, and the minutes for the July 5th meeting are approved. Okay, so here we are. The next item of business is public comment. This is the non-agenda public comment section, but anyone who wants to speak on an agenda item will have seven minutes. So, anyone who -- Ms. Hilde, is anyone who wants to speak on a different topic could just have three minutes or just have everybody have seven?
Well, being the rule follower that I am, if it is a non-agenda item, it is a three-minute, and if it is an agenda item, it's seven minutes. So, if the public, when they come up to speak, if they could let us know if it's an agenda or a non-agenda item.
Okay.
That would be great, and then we can set the timers appropriately.
Okay. Great. Okay, so I need the list. Okay, so the first person on the list is Mr. Paul Stickney. And everyone, remember to state your name and residential address when you come to the podium.
I'll be speaking on a agenda topic during a non-agenda public comment. Appreciate the flexibility. My name, Paul Stickney. I'm at 504 228th Ave., Southeast. Sent you all an email today, and I would like to just read my suggestions into the record. I suggest that as a Planning Commission, that you do two things tonight. One is to make a motion that supports a housing strategy plan based on the current comprehensive plan. That's what you're working on. That's what is, you know, before you. Only one amendment I suggest is from all the homework I've done, and because we haven't done a specific needs analysis to identify gaps, it's a little bit anecdotal, but it is quite studied. I think 70 to 80% of the housing shortages of supply in our city are at AMI categories, well over 100%, up to 500%, and less than 20 or 30 are under 100%. So, all I would do is make sure that the housing strategy plan tied to the current comp plan focuses truly on all and recognizes that the large majority of housing supply shortages, and this is relative to internal needs based on economic and demographic groups. Second thing I'd suggest is that you suggest to the City Council that they consider picking up changes to the comprehensive plan in the housing element that would include the comp plan, zoning, and development regulations along the lines of the 2-8 housing balance scenario that I've turned in before. And this would be to fully plan for internal housing needs and wants over recurring cycles of life. What I am suggesting and working on is our current comp plan is informed by our regional growth target that we negotiated as a city. We, as the Kings, we. And Samamish kept that low, and I actually applaud that. I understand the reasons to not bring a lot of external growth in. However, what our comp plan does not contemplate is what is the maximum amount of future single-family housing that can be built on R1, R4, and R6 lands with our current regulations in place and our future jobs. So, what I'm suggesting specifically that I wrote here was change the comp plan to contemplate what are the needs and wants of 21,000 households today and 4,000 jobs here today over time as things change in their lives, and to also take a look at what are housing needs and wants within our community internally over recurring cycles of life for the future build-out capacity of single-family homes and jobs. So, that's what I'm suggesting, is that you make a recommendation to the City Council to consider making those changes to the comp plan. One more summary here. The current comp plan does plan for one number, which is our regional target, which we negotiated as a city. What I'm talking about is our three numbers. Our regional growth target, what's the absolute capacity of our R1, R4, and R6 lands, and what are the needs and wants of those within our community over time. Those all are three different sets of numbers and have a comp plan which contemplates it all. So, I'm not going to repeat a lot that I've already turned in. There is a new first page I've handed you. All the other are things that you have. I would like to take a second and give two or three examples of how this, you know, how this policy would work. If somebody had a million and a half house, of which we have lots in Samamish, and their kids have left and they want to sell, they may want to downsize to a $900,000 or $1 million condo. That's 600,000 or 700,000 less than their house is worth. They lower overhead, but they stay in the community and have something fantastic. I've known lots of people that have separated or split up. I've known folks that have had a spouse, you know, pass away. I've known people that have had a big job change. There's all kinds of reasons to plan for housing supply that is modestly optimized to needs and wants over time. The most important reason is for our households within our community over time. The least important reason is because the GMA says to plan for all economic segments and all the demographic groups in the CPPs and the MPPs. There are two reasons in the middle which really matter. There is tremendous wealth through housing balance, which has been explained in all the documents I've turned in. And also, we don't get a redo of the town center. If we don't get the right size in there and we chose to upsize units in other part of the city later, that would be a real issue on all the neighborhoods. There should be some in the neighborhoods, but nowhere near what could go into town center. So, it's important for our residents. It's important for the value, the advantages, for the environment socially, financially, transportation, and the region. It's important for getting town center right, and it's what the GMA calls for.
That's it.
Thank you for your comment. The next person on the list is -- have to help me here. Maybe it's Deb Saj?
Sogi.
Sogi. Sorry.
Good evening. My name is Deb Sogi with the Samamish Chamber of Commerce, and I'm here to speak a little bit about what we're hearing with the chamber from folks in the community about housing. First of all, I want to thank the commission for your due diligence and all your research and hard work. I know what you do behind the scenes. It's a lot of work, and we really do appreciate that you're serving the public here in Samamish. Thank you for your work. I do, you know, I've met with Paul Stickney over the years, and I've heard his research and study, and as a chamber, we've come to understand. It took a while, but we've come to understand what he's researching and do agree with it. But basically, I don't have the numbers like he does, but I do have real facts here of what I'm getting. So, I recently received a letter, and I received an email and a couple of phone calls within the last month about one certain lifestyle change, and that's getting older, retirement, aging in place. And most of the comments that were made to me were from people that live inside Samamish, and they happen to be baby boomers like I am, and their lifestyle has changed. They raised their family like I did, and now they're either alone, they're widowed, they're divorced, or they're with their partner and they want to stay in Samamish. If they sell their house, they'll get a lot of money for it, but they won't be able to live here anymore. And we would like them to live here because having the same people here that have given to this community keeps the character. You talk about character of Samamish. That keeps the good character here. There's a lot of people living here that have made a difference in our city, in our community, and wouldn't it be nice if they could stay? So, I'm talking about aging around Samamish, aging in place here, and I'd like to see more opportunities to retire here, to maybe downsize by a condo here, to remain in the community you love. Why I have to give that up? So, that's what I'm hearing a lot from the senior population right now that says, please, where can we live where we can afford to stay here? The other people I'm hearing from are, as the business community speaks to me, they're always saying, the owners of businesses are always saying, Deb, tell the council we need some changes with housing because our employees can't live here. We have one sitting right here in the front row that's a wonderful employee of the Mail Post down the street. He can't afford to live here. He doesn't make that much money. Maybe he will next week, I don't know. But, you know, he had to move out of the community, which means he has to ride a bus to get here, and it makes it harder. There, the Samamish Cafe, the Safeway, the Metropolitan Market, I've heard from all of these people, Mail Post, I've heard from many people that can't hire people to work for them at $15 an hour or a little more because they can't afford to live here, and maybe they can't afford to buy a car, too. So, we need better transportation, of course, but we need better housing. We need more balance. I'm hearing from schools with the teachers. It's very difficult for teachers. We are proud of our schools. In fact, I send out relocation packages every day during the summer to people that want to live here because of the schools, but then they want to find out how much it costs to live here. Everything else, they hear Samamish is such a great city. We were just named last week at another public domain as the top 10 places to live in the nation. We are a great place to live, but how can we attract those great teachers to teach our kids if they can't afford to live in the area? So, I just want to say that the town center, I believe, is the solution. It will bring multi-family housing. It'll bring all types of housing. It'll bring retirement centers, and I believe it is the answer to our traffic solution, too, as people stay on the plateau to shop and get their services. There's a lot of walkability planned for the town center, and wouldn't it be wonderful to live there, afford to live there, too, and walk instead of drive your car around town? With the cafes they're planning, and the cinema, and Ace Hardware and all the others, it is going to be a great place to retire. It's going to be a great place for young people to live. And do we want to be lopsided with middle-class, not middle-class, wealthy people that can afford the big homes, but nobody else can live here because they can't afford to? We need diversity. So, I just put that out to you as what I'm hearing in the public constantly, especially from businesses, that we need more affordable housing. We need more of a balance. We're way out of balance inside our city. Let's see if there's anything else. I don't want to forget anything. Also, I want to point out that the city, by keeping people shopping in the city, it keeps the revenues here. We don't have leakage off the plateau. We have major leakage right now with tax dollars. So, it would be great to keep people living in one core area so we don't have the sprawl. Nobody wants to see more of these housings sprouting up on every piece of land there is so that we have nothing but sprawl, but we want to keep everything in one core area like the town center planned. So, anyway, that's my two cents about housing and what I'm hearing on the street. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment.
Chair Collins, may I? Can I ask a question?
Yes, please.
Deb, since you're kind of a representative of the business community.
Right.
I like your comment, short, of course, about the common assumption is that if we build the town center, that there'll be, I forget the number is, of retail and commercial space. There's 1,000 square feet. I remember what the number is, 200,000, I think. The common belief is that that will just fill up, right?
Will fill up?
Yeah. There's been a lot of suggestion about movie theaters. You even mentioned that.
Yeah.
Restaurants and so on. But yet, in Samamish occasionally, we see storefronts that sit empty. We see businesses that struggle to succeed even when you would think that they would be very successful. What is your perception as a representative of the business community of the way that retail and commercial will actually come into the community?
Progress. Yeah. So, you do see it in places like Safran. You saw it for a long time where there were empty storefronts. It has a lot to do with the management of these stores, the leasing agents, and what they're offering. And you look at Safran, for example, there's not a lot of parking there. So, it did turn off a lot of business people that were worried that if they moved in there, there wouldn't be parking for, especially restaurant people, they were really concerned. And also, it depends on the representative, the leasing agent, and how much they're offering. So, there wasn't a lot of flexibility there for a while, and they learned they had to be more flexible with what the tenant improvements would be, things like that. There have been a lot of restaurants interested in coming to Samamish. We've just recently seen three different restaurants turn away because they were concerned about the council's decision on moratorium. And so, we actually lost two really good, high-end restaurants that were worried, and they don't trust anymore. So, when the town center first started building, we had a lot of interest, and you saw it come. It's here. But then, up the street, there's a lot of worried people saying, I don't know. I can't wait around. My costs are going up for leasing. My costs are going up for development, and so I can't wait around forever. And there's been a couple other businesses. One is a workforce group. Another one is a gym that wanted to come, and they just said, you know, we just can't trust Samamish anymore. Samamish was a very business-friendly community. It was becoming more and more so. We don't have BNO taxes here. It's one of the few cities that doesn't. So, it is, we were developing a very good business-friendly community, and unfortunately, we've lost some of that with the moratorium because they're very concerned on what the decisions are going to be made in the future and what's being made now. But I do see that in the good economic times like now, we can still do really well. Yeah, we can't promise the cinema's coming. We can't promise any of those. Things are coming, but we do have interest. We have an intent letter from Ace Hardware. We had a couple other intent letters, I believe, from a cafe or so. So, I, all we can say is during good economic times, they will come. During, you know, as we wait, economic times will not always be so good. You never know. But does that answer?
Yes.
A little bit?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the next person to speak is Karen McKnight.
I live at 22329 Northeast 28th Street in Samamish. I've lived here since 1980, and I've sold real estate here since 1983. Half of my career, I worked with builders and developers. And so, the main thing I want to say tonight about housing is I absolutely believe in smart planning, and I think the state did an amazing job with the Growth Management Act, and I think we have an incredible opportunity in town center to enhance that. And so, I've met a few times with Paul Stickney. I've actually known him almost 30 years. He's a fellow Realtor. Anyway, I really, I've read his reports and his studies, and he's done an incredible amount of work, and I really respect his intellect and his integrity. And so, I'm here to speak to add to his comments about balanced growth. And right now, we are really totally out of balance in this community. We only have, we have a lot of single-family homes. And so, in the 200 acres that are part of town center, we have an opportunity to build different price ranges of homes, different types of homes, so that, as Deb mentioned, people can retire here in this community. Maybe we can have more, some condominiums, some townhomes, so that people can buy more affordable housing instead of the houses on the single-family lots. I also firmly believe that when we create density, we enhance the opportunity for better transportation, internal around the community, plus external going to other areas that are metropolitan area. We can't have that without the density. And also, once town center is built, and I want to accentuate that it's a 20-year project. I think when I hear some of these conversations, people are thinking it's like immediate. I mean, we're making plans for 20 years. And so, as this develops, if we do it smartly, we'll have more diverse housing, we can have better transportation, and we can also create a city with a better walk score. And walk score is becoming very important for selling real estate. Also, I think it's really important to plan for the life cycle of those of us who live here. A lot of us have now kids here who have grown, and we'd like to stay here, and maybe someday we want to give up our big house on the big lot. So, I really, I guess I'm here to support what Paul is proposing. I think it's, has a lot of foresight, and he's put a ton of research into it. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person to speak is Julio Richburg? Or Julie Richburg? I'm not sure. I was.
You got it right.
Sorry.
So, my name is Julio Richburg. I am a resident of 1312 229th Place here in Samamish, longtime resident, not quite as long as Karen. Been here since 1986, so I got here as soon as I could. I'm here to speak on an agenda item during the non-agenda schedule. So, I'm also a business owner. My business is based here in Samamish. It started out as a home business with great plans of growth and intend to hopefully very shortly here have an office here in Samamish as well where we employ people inside the city of Samamish. I'm here tonight also as a member of the Samamish Chamber of Commerce, the vice president on the board, and in support of Paul's proposal and recommendations to the Planning Commission to give to the City Council because I believe very strongly that balanced housing is so important to our community for the same reasons, the social aspects, the financial aspects, transportation, and I really feel that this is the best way to build our community, right? Make it stronger. Many of the issues that we face today in Samamish are the result of not having balanced housing. So, the transportation issues that we see are a result of many of these issues that Paul has been so kind to research and bring to our attention. I speak regularly with individuals who work but cannot afford to live in Samamish, right? And I'm going to build on a lot of the things that these guys have all said, but, you know, we all, as leaders in the community and business owners, we get together regularly to talk about these issues, right? So, there are things that you guys might not hear everyone coming up here talking to you about, but we're talking about them regularly in the community. These people that can't afford to live in Samamish, teachers, policemen, firemen, people that work for the city, they add a lot of character and flavor, and they would be great members and residents and neighbors, having their kids go to our schools, et cetera, et cetera. Not just the older people who are retiring, but also the younger people. I'm fortunate to be the second generation to be raised in this city. I have the third generation in my house now. She will probably grow up, graduate from high school, go off to college, and not be able to afford to live in Samamish, right? Now, that would be a shame. We would love to have our young people be able to come back. So, Deb mentioned Peyton here. She failed to mention he also grew up in Samamish and had to leave. So, now, he's giving all of his best to Redmond. How unfortunate is that, right? We talked about a community, and I've heard many people like Don Jaren stand up and talk about our community, and one of the things that he said just recently was, do we really want to have a transient community? People who are only here for that one segment of their life, right? They're here to raise their family, then as soon as that's done, they leave Samamish. Or, like I just said, we raise our children here, and then once they're out of the nest, they leave Samamish and maybe never come back. And I think that's a detrimental cycle that we should, we should really be working on breaking. And just to talk a little bit about the empty storefronts, we talk about that quite often as well, and I believe that that is definitely a result of habits. People in Samamish are not used to staying on the plateau for services that they could potentially seek here, right? And as we said before, those are tax dollars that are leaving our city and going to Redmond, to Issaquah, and to Bellevue when they could stay right here, right? So, when we see those empty storefronts, we have to think, well, gosh, how could this town center help us out? Well, it's going to change people's habits. They're going to stay on the plateau now to go to restaurants, to go to the dentist, to go do all of these other things that now they're leaving the plateau to do. And how many times that we hear where people say, I never knew that business was here, or I never knew that service was available here in Samamish? And that's what we need to change, and that's why the town center is so important to, I think, the future of this community for all of those reasons, socially, transportation-wise, and most important financially, and building our community. So, with that, I'll give the rest of my time back to you and hope that you make the recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next person to speak is, I guess this would be Peyton?
Yes.
Peyton Stever?
Stever.
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 [inaudible].
I feel a little bit like some of my testimony has been taken up by other people. But let me just start. My name is Peyton Stever, and I live now at 16596 Northeast 84th Court in Redmond. I think I wrote my previous address out of force of habit before realizing, oh yeah, I don't live there anymore. I first moved to Samamish in 1997 when my dad got a place here. I have been an employee of the Mail Post for the better part of 11 years now, almost 11 years. I'm a graduate of Eastlake High School. I grew up in this community. And as Deb and others have mentioned, I had to move to Redmond when it finally came time to start renting a place on my own and sort of trying to get some independence from my family and my own agency, I guess, as a human being. So I do want to start by saying I support the comments that Paul's given and that the other commenters so far have given. There's a lot of good ideas there. I want to mention something else, though, that I don't think anyone else will mention, and that is that multifamily and mixed-use housing is in a very efficient use of public infrastructure. Denser housing per capita uses less sewer, less road capacity, less of just about anything that the city provides. This has been proven by repeated studies, and if you're interested, I can point you to some of them. One website in particular that focuses on this is one called Strong Towns. And what Strong Towns does is they look at the tax revenue that is generated across cities. And there is tax surpluses wherever there is density in cities and towns across this country. And where there is sprawl and single-family housing exclusively and separated uses, there is tax deficits. And in many cases, that Strong Towns has documented, there is infrastructure crises that can't be paid because the city sort of bought more than the long-term revenue of that kind of development will provide. So I just want to say that the decisions that you make now have these long-term impacts that people don't think about, like on the net tax revenue. And I don't want to see Samamish end up in a situation where the beautiful suburban communities, which are so cherished by the people who live here, fall into disrepair because the tax revenue doesn't match the infrastructure demands we've created in the past. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. The next person to speak is Mary Victor.
Hi, my name is Mary Victor, and I live at 408 208th Avenue Northeast in Samamish. And thank you for letting us have this opportunity to speak because I remember last week, they said, hey, we want to hear more input. And I think this gentleman here, who I've heard speak twice now, and I'm very impressed, he just brought up some stuff we hadn't heard before that I think is very important for you to consider. So tonight, I wanted to talk about the housing strategy and the motion amendments that Paul Stickney has proposed. I know that you have to adopt this housing strategy for the current COP plan, but it would be really great if you could do some amendments to the motion that would recognize the internal supply shortages that we have. And the motion that he's also saying is we need 2,000 less single-family homes, and we need 8,000 more homes in Town Center. So I think doing that would actually make a much better tomorrow for Samamish. And next slide, please. You'll have to click for me. In Samamish, we just have way too many big homes and very few or too many smaller homes. We don't have very many multifamily or condos. We're 6% to 10% of that. Next slide, please. The data is lacking. The 2003 COP plan actually had data that was more complete. And then Art Sullivan has provided some things from Arch, which is helping. We never did the needs analysis and statistically valid surveys, but I think Paul has some really good numbers about that. And the first time I met Paul, he said, you know, we really have gaps that we're not meeting. And I really understood for the first time that housing affordability is not the same as affordable housing. You need affordable housing, but you also want housing affordability. Next slide, please. Also, the Growth Management Hearing Board, the city was challenged. And we think it would be good if you responded with blending the city and consultant work with what Paul Stickney and Richard Burr have suggested. Next slide, please. The staff in the city concultants really only want to meet the lowest three levels due to the policy. But Samamish is becoming more and more imbalanced. It started off imbalanced, and as long as we're just continuing to add its single-family homes and not upping it, we're going to just stay that way. Next slide, please. So it's really good to recommend, and it's even required by the Growth Management Act, to meet all the housing, not just the three lowest. And then that would meet your demographic needs, and it would be a much more balanced approach. Next slide, please. If you cumulatively bring everything in, Paul always uses optimized number. He's not asking for the maximum or the most. He's trying to figure out what he feels would be optimized. If you add more smaller units to Town Center, they're truly needed there, and they're going to work for all the reasons that people before me spoke. So you need to change the policy. You can stick with the 2015 COP plan, but the Town Center Plan and Development Regulations and zoning will need to be changed so that you can actually incorporate the things being suggested. Next slide, please. And it isn't going to really add a traffic burden because you're going to have people that will change their habits. They will live, they will work, they will shop, they will play here, they will visit Town Center. I know that's happened even in my family. We used to drive off for everything, and as Samamish has changed, we've learned to stay more. I'm also sort of an empty nester, but I've also learned they move back. So people can change, and we need to make that change for them because I think it's the right thing to do. Next slide, please. So you need to optimize Town Center now by looking at the housing supply. You need to meet the past and the present housing deficiencies as soon as we can, because we really can't have seniors stay or people downsizing. New residents can't afford to come in. We really are not meeting jobs and services at all. And those are also part of the Growth Management numbers that people generally don't talk about, but you need to meet those, too. That's why they came up with the Town Center Plan in the beginning. And then that would let our teachers don't have to be married to a Microsoft person to live here, firefighters and police. You could have single people, people that have a family, people that are starting to have a family, or people that have grandchildren live here. Next slide, please. So Town Center really must serve everyone. We need the right mix. And you guys are the magic. The magic is you. We need to do that to avoid future problems, because if you don't get it right now, you don't get a redo later, and there isn't another chunk of land that you can do it on. So this is the time. Next slide, please. So the inventory now is, you need to look at, like Paul talked about three things. He says there's the growth target number that's external, and then there's the needs and the wants. And then the other thing is the full build-out capacity. If you just took Samamish, you looked at the existing zoning and full build it out, you have those three numbers, and we need to look at that. So we can't just have the half and half with the single-family homes and half multifamily. It needs to be a lot more multifamily and less. It's not just the growth target number of 4,640, because you know we're going to get another target. And we need to fill in the needs and wants that we have, and we need to get the data to do that. And I think we actually have the data. It's time for you guys to move forward and make the change. So I'm hoping you'll consider that tonight and send it that way to City Council. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. And the next one is Harry Shedd.
Harry Shedd, 2313 Sahaly Drive East. By now, you've heard all the details. I won't reiterate most of them. You've gotten a lot of information from Paul over the weeks. You've seen an awful lot of detail. He's done essentially your job for you. It's a matter of you analyzing what he's given you and deciding which steps to take as you forward the plans to the council. It's so comprehensive, it's so in-depth. He spends so much time, effort, and money, it's hard to imagine that we can't surmise that this plan will be viable in the city. I've not seen another plan. I don't know if you have. This is a well-rounded A to Z plan that is readily adaptable, even including the motions that he's recommended you make tonight as you prepare to forward this plan to the council. It's so important, and it is important that it go now. The details have covered everything from a macro to a micro position. He's just covered everything you can imagine. If you haven't had a chance to ask Paul a question or two, he's here tonight. Be sure that you get your answers tonight. But please, look on this plan in a very positive fashion. Realize that the council has nothing more important before them than what you send them, and that this will be a long-range plan that the city will live with for many decades to come. Thank you for your close attention and your response to his inquiry tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Shedd. And the last person on the list, I believe it's, is it Karen Howe? What is that?
Karen Herring, 23684 Southeast 32nd Way. Apparently, I write like a doctor. However, I am not a doctor. Sorry. I have to just ditto everything I've heard here tonight. I've had a lot of conversation with Paul, and I think he chartered a bus today or something, and we're all on that bus. So please, do consider everything you've heard. I'm sorry I missed the hearing on the 5th. I messed up my calendar. But every person that stood up there was speaking for me, too. And I think that if Peyton could live here, we'd all be in a very good space right now. We need to have affordability for persons like Peyton. He's our future, and we should watch out. One thing I have noticed that I don't see a lot of talk about is how many homes. I live in a neighborhood that's quite old, and people are selling, and developers want those homes. Some of them are bought by developers, and they can't develop, but they're leasing them. So a parcel that was a single-family home now has five tenants in it, and they're driving in and out in a bitty gravel country driveway. And so concurrency is affected. A little bit of an environmentally critical area is affected. And these are happening all over neighborhoods, and those aren't being counted because I don't think our city is aware of them. But it's happening, and they're there. We need the multifamily and extended family kind of homes in our neighborhoods. There are many, many folks I see walking. And it's the grandma and the grandpa walking the stroller with the kid, and they all live in the same home, and the mom and the dad are at work. And there are lots of those homes in my neighborhood. So let's make sure we're building for these things. The Town Center needs to happen. I don't know about condos and townhomes or apartments. I don't know what's allowed and what the rules are. But I thought there would be cottage homes, too. And I would love it if my grandkids could move here. They can't afford to. If they could, I'd help them get here. So thanks for putting up with me.
Thank you for your comment. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak tonight? No? Okay, the public comment section of tonight is now closed. Thank you all for coming, and thank you all for your thoughtful comments tonight. The next item of business is Old Business. And tonight, it is the deliberation and recommendation, Samamish Homegrown, a Plan for People, Housing, and Community, and also the Associated Comprehensive Plan Amendment. So tonight, we will continue deliberations. We opened the public hearing last meeting on July 5th, and we closed it. Thankfully, we were able to hear from more residents this evening, which was really helpful. And so now, it is our job to deliberate and vote with the rest of the time we have tonight. I know that staff has a short presentation, so we'll go ahead and listen to that, and then we'll see where we go.
Thank you, Chair Collins. My name is Doug McIntyre. I'm a planner with the Department of Community Development. And to my left is Kelly Hillby, our planning manager. And to my right is Arthur Sullivan from Arch, our Regional Coalition for Housing. So we're here tonight to talk about Samamish Homegrown. This is kind of the culmination of almost a years-long process. We started talking about this in September of 2017, and we've had quite a lot of really good and in-depth discussions. We started really talking about the most high-level concepts behind this, and we've now gotten to pretty substantive items in our deliberations. And I think that that demonstrates our rational approach to it. We've defined the problem. We've looked at the alternatives. We've, we're now choosing among those alternatives and prioritizing them. And then we're going to look at implementing them so that we can evaluate and monitor those, and then reassess if necessary. So again, this is the night that we are planning to take action. So we have a couple of topics, just real quick. At the end of the meeting on July 5th, which was our last meeting on this in our public hearing, Planning Commission directed staff to have some discussion about some of the testimony that was received, and we'll have a quick slide on that. After that, we will talk about just generally the revisions that we've had to the plan and the matrix since then. Arthur will cover that part and in general, talk about the plan as well, the intent of the plan. And then we'll turn it back to Chair Collins for direction on deliberation and vote, and hopefully finalize that tonight. So there, again, going back to July 5th, at the end of the, or at the end of the meeting, Planning Commission felt that it was really important to have staff discuss one particular item, which has been the topic of conversation between, prior to that meeting and since that meeting, as well as tonight. So what we wanted to talk about in general was the, really the planning cycles that we deal with. So as noted in this timeline, this is really high-level. This is really conceptual, but it conveys the key milestones that we deal with. So leading up to a periodic update, which in this case was due in 2015, we get growth targets, and we work on something called the Buildable Lands Report. So those are two efforts that we do, generally speaking, with King County, but also with a more regional approach as well. So without getting into too much detail, the state projects out population growth for all counties in the state, and that's the Office of Financial Management. Through that process, the numbers allocated to the county are converted to dwelling units. And so the counties have dwelling units that they need to plan for growth. So each city participates through the King County countywide planning policies, and then deliberate and dole out portions of that growth based on a hierarchy that's determined at the multi-county level. So through that, we got our growth target, and that was adjusted for the period of 2015 to 2035. And that number, as has been stated a couple of times, is 4,640. That's our baseline capacity that we need to plan for through our zoning map. So then we go through and work on policies and goals as well. We work on the zoning map, land use density, those types of really large planning topics. And that is then adopted through our Comprehensive Plan Update. And that was done in 2015. So that's really the policy development, and that was done through extensive public outreach, expertise from various consultants, interdepartmental coordination, and a lot of long, long Planning Commission and City Council meetings. So once that was adopted, we had a framework to work with. And part of that framework was housing policy. And when we adopt the framework, we then start working on implementing that framework. And that's where we're at tonight, is the plan for Samamish Homegrown, our housing strategy plan for 2018. We're taking that 2015 policy framework and demonstrating through priorities how we want to work on that for the next remaining years until we update, go into the next update for the Comprehensive Plan. And so with that being said, the next sort of work necessary to do that periodic update, which is due in 2023, will begin sometime in the next 18 to 24 months with, again, the growth targets and King County Buildable Lands Report, which feed into our policy development and policy assessment. So that's really kind of the high level. There's a lot that goes into this, but this is just some excerpts to help the Planning Commission understand the GMA cycle that we go through. And this is basically a cycle that never ends. We will continue to get growth targets. We will continue to reassess our policies, and we will continue to implement our policies. So this is meant as kind of, to help you conceptualize where we come from as staff in terms of the step one first, step two second, step three third. So again, with some of the discussion, what we did want to focus on was a lot of those, a lot of the elements that we've heard tonight are, the city absolutely supports that, and we support that through our policies. We also support that in the strategies that are in front of the Planning Commission tonight. So for instance, housing balance has been talked about, diversity of housing, affordable housing. A lot of those are absolutely within the city's policy framework as it exists. We want to look at our tools to help us implement those policies. One of the tools is sub-area plans, and our sub-area plan, as you all know, is Town Center. And that really did establish our growth And that really did establish our growth strategy for how we dealt with our growth target. And the point there is that through the comprehensive plan, we basically determined that roughly 55% of the growth in that 4640 would be outside of town center, and 45% of that would be inside of town center. So that was the stated official policy statement of the city on how to grow, again, adopted in 2015. So again, we do support a lot of the elements that have been brought up and want to draw attention to the various strategies. We can go into more detail, as Planning Commission would like to discuss some of those. But I think that, you know, we want to just emphasize that the Planning Commission has done a lot of great work, and we want to be able to start implementing our policies because, as planners, we frequently get accused of never implementing. And I think that this is a great demonstration of how we are trying to implement. So we don't want to lose sight of the timing of it, the fact that it's a tool meant for implementation on a relatively near-term, near-term timeframe, roughly three to five years, and that there are venues and other times coming up to talk about policy development and changes to our growth strategy. So the time has to be ripe, and the tool has to be right as well. So that's kind of where we're, where this slide is meant to help bring us all onto the same page, hopefully. So with that, I will turn it over to Arthur to talk in a little bit more detail about the plan.
Can I just have you comment on one small thing? I think it's important probably to recognize that there's a dot on the timeline, but some of those dots represent the end of a lot of work that happens.
That's correct.
So could you just comment on the comp plan update of 2023? When's the likely cycle when that process actually starts? It feels like it's five years from now, but what is it really when the start of that action occurs?
Right, and that's a good clarifying point. I'd probably gloss over that. Comp plan updates, generally speaking, take several years, and we will likely start that within the next 18 to 24 months, really starting the outreach for that, really starting to develop our path forward. Really, the first step in that is to develop a public participation program and then get the city council to adopt a work plan. So that will happen relatively soon. It's not something that's going to happen tomorrow, but we know that this is something that we want to embrace, and we want to really dive deeply on. So that will very likely start within the next 18 to 24 months. It will be a major effort of the city. It'll probably take first priority in many regards. All departments will work on it. There will be expertise in terms of consultants and a full-on outreach effort, so. Are there any other clarifying questions?
I don't know if now is the right time before Arthur speaks. What's Arthur going to go into?
Arthur will talk a little bit about the purpose of the plan, talk about revisions to the plan just briefly, and then we can answer questions as well.
I guess my question is, I don't need to be convinced by people. I was convinced a long time ago by everything people are saying. That's not the problem. The problem for me is, does what we're doing fit the city's process? And that's what I don't get. And I think that's what you have to explain, Doug, is that it seems like the comp plan, 2015 comp plan is cast in stone, and we can't change that. What we're doing is applying strategies to that plan as it exists. So if we can't change it, aren't some of the things that we're talking about, numbers and balance and changing densities, doesn't that require a change to the 2015 comp plan?
Yeah, and that's a, that's a great question. So the short answer is yes. I think what's being advocated for is a change to the strategy of how we grow, densify, further densify town center and potentially downzone parts of other areas outside of town center. I believe that's generally the concept. I don't think that that's a bad concept at all, but I think where we're, the slide here is meant as a demonstration of the cycles that we go through and timing and the tools that we use. So that's kind of the really quick, short answer to that. We are, the first question you had was, is this within our process? So the implementation plan, our housing strategy plan, Samamish Homegrown, is absolutely within our process. The bar at the bottom is meant to demonstrate the, the idea of developing the policies, establishing that framework, and then, and then going into the implementation side of it, and then coming back after we've done some implementation, reassessing, adjusting where needed, and then going into, again, that kind of cycle of looking at our comprehensive plan policies. So.
It might be helpful if we did, I think the next slide sort of gets at a bit of what you're mentioning, Commissioner O'Gorman, so it might be helpful to provide that context for the whole group here, if that's okay?
Okay, fine.
Okay. So I think what, we just wanted, I'm here to help cover a couple of things. One is sort of, what is a comprehensive plan? What is a housing strategy plan? And just very briefly, just give sort of a quick overview. And so the first is that a comprehensive plan, as Doug was saying, is when one main element of the comprehensive plan is accommodating the targets that are developed for all growth within the county, people moving, people moving in, changes in life, all of those things. So that's a process you went through, and that was all updated, and that expresses those at the level of goals and policies. And it also had, as we said, a lot of public, a lot of extensive public outreach to develop that. That was put in place in the last, about two-plus years ago. What the housing strategy plan is doing is it's taking those policies and goals that have been adopted, and is now saying, how do we take, make progress on those goals and policies? The purpose is not to change the goals and policies. The purpose is to have strategies that best implement that. Now, there's a lot of room within there, and that's why you've been taking, as Doug said, six months plus nine months to look at a range of strategies and your community conditions, and what you're basically doing is focusing on the next three years or so. And so that's where you've been, we've been using these sort of high strategies, the ones that you think are most relevant now to undertake first, either because of timeliness issues or because of magnitude issues or other conditions you see in your community, as well as trying to create a growth, a balance of strategies to address the wide range of housing. This is not just an affordable housing strategy. It's a housing strategy. Its purpose is to implement goals and policies, and it is not meant to be an end-all. That's why we're not, we have the full matrix. So the idea is that after several years, you look at the effects of the strategies and the work that's been done on the ones that you're prioritizing at this time. They become work program items. Each one of those will be looked at individually, those strategies. So you're not coming up with a housing strategy saying what you're going to do in each of those areas. You're saying, what are the things that need to be really gone in in more depth and focused on and get broad community input on each one of those priority strategies? Each one requires a fair amount of work to look at. Then the idea is, after like three years or so, after you've worked on several of these strategies, go back and have a similar conversation that you've had this year. How have we done? And that will inform two things, given the timing that you've seen here. One, it'll inform, potentially updating what next strategies might be worth looking at harder, but as importantly, it will also help, given the cycle we're in now, it will also be input to updating your comprehensive plan. So that's sort of in a quick nutshell, is trying to distinguish the difference between the comprehensive plan and the housing element and the housing strategy. And then, if you're ready to move on, now is going to just sort of go into the document that you have, so that you guys can then do your deliberation.
So is it, would it be fair to say, or would it be accurate to say, that the changes that we've heard from public comment are structural in nature to the plan for Samamish? And even if, I'm not saying we necessarily would, but if the Planning Commission supported that concept, we really couldn't implement it with the housing strategy anyway? Because of the nature of the change, it needs to be done in a different process.
Correct. It's more, the comments, I think you're hearing are more comprehensive plan level and land use, especially land use code level. Correct. Now, you may make comments to say that we need to watch that really carefully and look at, and look into that, but to go so far as to say that's there, that's actually changing the, and that's a comprehensive plan level conversation.
And again, when you focus on the right tool, the basic tool behind an upzone and a downzone would be the zoning map, and the zoning map is outside of the scope of what we're looking at here.
Right. So that would take more council direction to do that versus the direction we have at this point on the housing strategy. Okay? So the next slide we're in is quick, I'm going to just try to quickly go over what we've worked on as staff, and when I say we, it's all the staff here and others in the audience here that have been working on this. So it's been a team effort to pull together a variety of information that sort of, hopefully this is feeling like it's not major changes to what you saw last time, but it is changes that are trying to be responsive to your last conversation. So along those lines, and there is probably one, is that the first thing we did is you asked us to have, try to get three examples for every strategy. So there are a number of strategies, such as C2 and 3, and 6, C6, and E2, and E3, and wherever we made a change from last time, it's an underlying format, so you can see that. So that was one that we tried to do. We also tried to add, and I think we talked with you about this, we talked about timeliness. And so we, staff took a stab at sort of knowing some things that are kind of in the work program or that have been identified as work items. And so if you see that column shaded, it means that strategy may pair up well with conversations or work items that are already on the agenda. If you can think of other reasons something should be considered timely, then we can add that, and that can be a consideration as well. The other thing we did, and this is, this is definitely one in which we just sort of put this, we're putting that out there for your consideration, is that the ones that we categorized as high were those that were the top three vote-getters, I think is how, I think was where you were going for after all your conversation. You did some shifting around of some of the strategies. And what we did is, we also then said, well, you had others that had votes, and they got more than one vote, and so we put mediums by those that got more than one vote. So that felt like more than one commissioner had expressed interest in the topic. So we just put out there for consideration that, again, just to have a little more refinement to the, to the categorization, whether or not you think those fit well or not, we just sort of put that out there for your consideration. We did do, and we probably made, we also made some relatively substantial changes to the examples in A2 and A3. That was where the subdivision, and we did that one because of the conversation, and you had a lot of conversation, so we tried to reflect the conversation in the examples column. And then for A3, it was asked, can you try to play around and edit that? So we didn't try to change the intent or the content. We just tried to do a little more wordsmithing and a little bit of fine-tuning editing to that section. And there's a few other places where you'll see similar kind of editing in some of the others, but those were the most substantial ones that we did. Now, there is one thing, and are you going to hand out the, do you have enough of those? Okay, so. Okay, so in, not all of us were in town at the end of last week, so we do have, as from staff, two proposed edits to the examples we added. So I was just going to describe those to you. They're in C2 and 33. And if you want to, I don't know if we can, is there a way to post that's, that part of the agenda? And they're not some real major changes, but we just thought that they might be a little more appropriate. In C2, we had added a third example called, that was stated, "Consider exemptions for area-wide rezon requests." And this is under the one about including affordable housing, you know, provisions when you do rezones and things like that. We're proposing not to include that one, but rather to have language that reads something along the lines, "Combine the zoning incentives with other incentives such as fee waivers or short-term property tax incentives," or "Consider combining other incentives with the land use incentives in order to achieve a greater level of affordability." And that's where some cities have actually, with their land use, like you're at 70% of median or 80% of median, they've now taken another strategy that the city's implementing, and rather than getting another 10% at 70 or 80, they get the same 10%, but they get it at 50 or 60% of median. So that's what this example was to say, is some cities have combined different regulatory tools to get greater affordability. So we thought that might be a better third example in that one. And then the other edit is more of a clarification edit, right in the next section, and this is about looking at, this is under C3, and that policy is related to ranges of housing affordability. There is a, it reads right now, "Enable faith communities to provide shelter and/or affordable housing on surplus land." We thought the better edit is to say something like, "Support the youth of faith communities' property to provide shelter and/or affordable housing." Usually, the churches aren't the ones who are providing it. They work with a community agency to do the actual provision. So it's an edit just to sort of be more clear that the work is usually done by somebody else that's just using that property. So those are the only, those are two final edits that we just sort of caught as we were doing after the packet went out. So with that, that's our staff presentation. And so you can see these up on the board here now, up on the screen. Those are the two areas where we have it. So back here, we're just, we were just going to leave this screen up so that what we're looking for you is to deliberate if you have edits or questions. It's now in your hands, and, you know, to reinforce to see if the strategies are working or any of the language. So it's both of those sides. So we're here to help.
There's one other edit I wanted to talk about and just bring attention to. Mr. James Eastman had spoke at the last meeting about data, and it was something that actually I spoke with Rituja at the end of the meeting and said, oh, we didn't address it before the meeting ended. And he had brought up some really good points about using data that was 2012, which actually, when you think about it, is a little bit older than, you know? It's like I look at 2012, it doesn't seem old to me, but then I realize we're in 2018. It's like, okay, it's six years old. So I know staff went through the document and tried to add more current data where they could. And then in other places, that was not possible. And so I wanted to just hear a little bit, I guess, from Arthur, if you want to explain some of the changes. But then, on the other side of the hand is that some data is just too expensive to get in the more current, in the current form, and, you know, while it's nice to be able to look at Zillow or Redfin or some of those other things, I don't think that data is quite as accurate as what we need. And so, you know, I'll have Arthur speak to more of that.
Right. So I think, yeah, so I think that you've, I think, done a good job of summarizing. We have looked at it. Some of the information is very specifically developed by the federal government as part of doing local affordable housing plans that are required for other programs, and they own, and that requires them collecting certain data and organizing it in a certain way. And they have not updated that. So those are the areas where you don't see updating. The other is when we're using census data, which is the most complete data, even if we use current data, it's going to be 2016 or 2015 because there's a lag period in collecting that data. And then there is some in which, you know, we can give more updated than when we have because it's more current. We try to do that. I think the main thing, I think we're saying, you know, the data that you had, and it's fine in this report. This report was meant to primarily reinforce the data that was already used to do your comprehensive plan update. And so we mostly relied on the housing needs analysis, and so the focus was focusing on the strategy. We wanted to have some data, just so if people are looking at it, they have a fresh thing. So there are a few places where we have updated it. But most significantly is almost all the trends you see, other than current pricing, is the distribution of affordability, the profile of households, they don't change that much in a couple of years. And so that's another consideration, too, in doing this, is, again, using what was used for your housing element. Couldn't always update. Some of it has been updated because it's nice to see most current data. And then the final is, even when we look at the trends, I've been watching trends for 30 years here for East King County, we're not seeing huge, you know, probably the one big change that we are seeing in the last couple of years is the actual pricing. So that is where we've tried to do our best. But again, there's always lag time with data. That's the biggest challenge.
I will add, Chair Collins, that we did, we did make one edit to Appendix C for data, and that was to really emphasize that connection back to the housing analysis that was done in a more comprehensive manner for the development of the policy framework. So what we took and put into Appendix C, in which the Planning Commission saw in February and March and subsequent meetings, was really the most helpful in developing our framework for the strategy plan. So just wanted to make that note, and we did add that in between the July 5th meeting and now.
And then I would just add is, we do agree that having, when we can, to have current data, and there are about 10 different things we try to do every year. We survey every new multifamily building, so we know what's being built this year. So those, you know, we do understand that issue of data. It's just a challenge always to be saying, it's always last month's data. It's always a challenge.
Thank you for that explanation. Okay, so that's all I have for clarifying comments. Okay, so that's all I have for clarifying comments.
Can I, I wanted to say, make a statement first in expressing gratitude and appreciation for the work that's been done by staff on this, because this is actually a pretty substantial document, I recognize that. I remember the first time I looked at it and I thought, how in the world is the planning commission going to do anything with this? So, thank you, I think that's, that's a great amount of work, and we should all appreciate that. I do have one similar wording clarification that kind of goes along with a couple that you said that you guys did, and I probably should have caught this in the past, but I didn't. Under B5, under the examples, and this is criteria to allow multifamily zoning increase, the, the complete text says, "Improve docket process for screening rezon applications to," probably should be based on, "but based on community goals and needs and less on individual property owner." I am a huge advocate of this particular item, but I'm a little concerned that the words at the end, "unless on individual property owner," could conceivably be misconstrued by someone, that it's the property owner versus the city, or in other ways, that could be taken in the wrong context. And I would suggest, and I don't know what the process is going to be, I think we should talk about that next, but it may be worth it just taking out from the word "and," so then instead of saying "unless on individual property owner," it just says, "Improve the docket process for screening rezon applications based on the community goals and needs."
We, I personally would be totally supportive of that, because this, most of this wording came from a concept you were explaining. So if, when you see it, that feels like that represents what you were trying to say better.
I mean, I think in practical fashion, that might be what happens in many cases, but I think putting it that way in the plan is a bit
Sure, great.
Not ideal. So I'd suggest that.
Great.
When we have these tiny type changes, can we go ahead and adopt them this way, or do we actually have to make amendments for these changes?
So, that's a great question, thank you, Chair Collins. The direction that we would provide on that is when they're really non-substantive in nature, or in this case, when something was incorrectly captured, I think that's something that the commission should put on, on the edit sheet, if you do identify some of these as we go, put it on the edit sheet and then hand it to staff, because those are really, in many cases, going to be non-substantive, sorry. So word choice, grammar, punctuation, those kinds of things. But if it's a more substantial edit, we do want the commission to talk about that as a whole.
Okay.
So that would be something that would need to be made as an amendment to the main motion, which it seems like commission might actually be working toward getting to that point in this process.
Okay. But the comment that Mark just made is kind of an edit sheet thing, so what does he need to do? Does he need to write that on a sheet, or do you guys have it now?
I think we've adequately captured that.
Or good?
And the reason being, because it was your idea in the first place, and we've incorrectly captured that, so I think that that's, but if there is discussion about it, I think we would certainly welcome that.
I don't have any discussion about it if anybody else doesn't. No, good?
I'm fine with the suggestion.
All right, any more clarifying, also anything else like that that anybody needs to talk about? Rituja?
I, I have, but I think, I think they're going to come as amendments.
Later?
Yeah, so that we all have a chance to discuss them.
Okay. All right, then, I think we can start or continue our deliberations with the motion.
Would it be all right if I ask a process question? So, can you just kind of clarify, I'll just state what I think we're supposed to be doing, and then maybe you can tell me why I'm wrong or where I'm wrong, which is very likely. So I believe we've self-imposed a deadline of this meeting to finalize a formal recommendation to the city council of the housing strategy plan. And so if we want to make substantive changes here, we need to have a motion to make that proposal, make that recommendation to the city council, and then we need to make amendments, right? So I believe that's kind of where we're going tonight. But do we have the opportunity, or is it even a bad idea, separate from that, if we want to provide comments to the city council that are not necessarily part of the plan, so wouldn't be formally in the plan, but other things that we think are worth communicating without putting in the plan, is that a, is that a practice that we could, we could do, or?
In other cities, we've seen, sometimes there's a cover memo, you know, so with the staff advancing memo, we can have a section in there that would incorporate other comments from commission. So that's what some other cities have done.
And we do that cover memo every time, so I don't see why that can't be done.
Okay, just want to make sure.
We can certainly circulate that to the whole commission.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Is everyone okay with process and understands how we're, how to move forward? Okay. All right, then, the recommended motion is down at the bottom of the page, if anyone wants to start with that, and then, it sounds like we have a lot of amendments, so we can work through the amendments one by one, after the, after we start the recommended motion. Okay.
Turn your mic on, Rituja.
You just turned it off, Rituja. Thanks. I move to recommend city council, I move that the, gosh, this is worded a little differently. Move to recommend city council adopts a Mamish homegrown, a plan for people, housing, and community, and the associated comprehensive plan amendment as presented by staff.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, to recommend city council adopts Mamish homegrown and the associated comprehensive plan amendment. So now we have the chance to deliberate. So I want to be fair about the amendments and who gets to say what, so, do you guys have any ideas on that? Who wants to go first?
You can start on the left.
I want to go first, okay.
No. Go ahead.
I'm willing to go first. I'm always willing. Oh, where are you going to start?
Well, I don't know.
I thought everybody
You don't have to start, you don't have to start, Eric. What, you want, do you want Jane to start? It doesn't matter who starts, as long as everybody gets to talk.
Just turn your mic on, Eric. Turn your mic on, Eric.
I have a number of things that could be talked about, and it's likely that we'll all be talking about them, so maybe I just kind of start off with, with one of my thoughts, right, that may be applicable to one of these different approaches, either the edit sheet or this memo thing or a motion, I don't really know. One of them was where, within the, the language of the, of the matrix, there's a lot of encourage, incentivize, this type of language. And I was thinking about doing more like the, you know, agile, my thinking where you're actually saying what you want, you're saying, you will do this, and here's a menu of goodies out of the goodie bag you can choose from, but, you know, we're going to get what we want. We've had a lot of examples of where there's been these things in the code where just it, it was never, never, no one took advantage of it, for whatever reason. And we're left with not getting what we want. So that would be maybe a, a change that I might suggest. And then, you know, maybe it might lend itself to being able to change what's in the goodie bag quicker or easier, to make what you want more palatable to, to those in which you're, whom you're imposing it on. But just, just kind of a, kind of turning a concept we're already doing and maybe twisting it a little bit and getting maybe more assurance that we'll get what we want. Is that a memo thing? Is that a?
Actually, that would be an amendment, because a requirement is a requirement, right? And an incentive is a choice. So, because I would consider that an amendment, and then for discussion and deliberation.
If I could, I want to go back to my earlier comments, and, and I think it relates to some of the wording that's in here. This plan isn't trying to say, we are doing exactly the things that are in the examples, it's trying to say, this strategy, the first column, is important, and when you go research it, here are things we want you to look at, but that deliberative process, when you focus on just that strategy, should be when you decide which of these things actually do happen. And so the intent with the strategy plan is not to implement the strategies, it's meant to set the work program to work on strategies. And so whether or not maybe that's part of your, I would almost say, so I don't know quite how to handle that comment and that interest, but I think, otherwise, we would need to take each of these strategies, and you'd need to work several nights on which of these examples you're willing to take the word "consider" off of.
Right. And actually, can I, I'm looking to Arthur, he could probably supplement, you know, the example. In the 2006 strategies, there was, there was a strategy that talked about a sub-area plan, an urban sub-area plan, which we have today as town center. And when that town center planning work was completed, we went on to the regulations. And our regulations for affordable housing in town center have a requirement and an incentive. All town center development, new development must, or development must provide 10% affordable housing. We also have an incentive pool. So that discussion happens during the regulation discussion, when we're going through that whole code, developing the code. So, as part of the strategy, and this is where I'm looking at, Arthur, because I believe you worked on that back in 2006, was the need for a urban center. And then we get into more of the work and analysis, as Arthur mentioned, when we start doing that implementation as in regulations.
So the, why we've added the example section is we found that a lot of the groups want something that does give an indication of which things within that strategy they want looked at harder. And so that's a lot of the purpose of the examples, to say, when you work on the strategy, see these things in the examples columns? Don't forget to consider those. Don't start with a blank slate, we've already been thinking about it, and through our, and other things may pop up, too, when you get into the detail on that strategy. But these are things you've identified during your process that you think should be looked at when that strategy is looked at in more detail. So if you don't like some of the examples, maybe they should come out as a group, but if you think they should be considered, then it's appropriate, and this is sort of sending more information to the council and you in the future, and the community of elements of that strategy to think about.
So it would be inappropriate to say, require expansion of housing choice.
Exactly.
And then you have these incentives or these goodie bags things, and that's what I'm, that would not be appropriate to...
Commissioner Brooks, tell, give us the example again.
What number are you on?
The one we're looking at right on the screen here, B1, it says incentives to expand housing choice. Now that, I'm suggesting that we say, you know, require expansion of housing choice as a, as one of these things we're hoping to achieve, I mean, right? And then we have different incentives that we could offer to people that would help offset the, you know, this imposition, or maybe I'm looking at it totally, totally wrong. I mean, and when I see incentives to expand housing choice, and we all want to see some expansion of housing choice, it leaves one to believe that somewhere else, there's a requirement that housing choice is going to be expanded, and this is maybe some of the incentives to help push that along, but it, is that how I should look at it?
Oh, I see.
Yeah, I think that is something that would be an amendment to the strategy, because that does change the substance of that strategy to make it a requirement, and I do think that that would be an amendment to that strategy. But, but again, I think, I think we got to, we got to look at kind of what Arthur has said, is, this is going to come back around when we do implement these, a lot of these are going to come back through planning commission, up through city council when we do the work.
So that would be one, I guess that would be one choice. The other is, I would, you know, I'm looking at that on the, you know, on pages 12 and 13 of the packet, and if you'll notice, it does carry over to page 13, there is a, it says, you know, "Housing to consider include," and then "Incentives to consider include." And so in the examples, there are a number of bullets of the types of things that you've identified that are presumably, should be looked at when you work on this strategy. So the act, the supply, I mean, the language is pretty proactive, "Provide incentives." I mean, that's a fairly proactive verb. If you want to change it to something else, that's fine, but I'm just wondering if when you look at those, that, all those examples, if that combined with the strategy language might address what you're raising.
The other question we have to ask is, who are we requiring? I guess we're, if we say, if we, if we use the verb "require," then we're sort of self-imposing that on ourselves, right? It's the city, we're not, we can't require the developer to expand the housing choice. I don't know, that's something that I, I don't know how to...
Yeah, because the incentives are, would be coming internally from the city. So I think "provide" sends like the right word, that we're providing the incentives, right? Because if you say "require," you are saying that of ourselves, we're requiring ourselves to.
We're requiring ourselves to expand housing choice, I don't know, how can we do that?
I think the, the big thing is, I understand that this is, this is a way to monumenting all of our great work that we've been doing, right? And that it's not the end-all, be-all thing, I understand that. And at the same time, I want to make sure we take good crib notes and we kind of record the mindset that we all had at the time we were working on it. So when we come around and pick it up again, and we, it's kind of long-forgotten, so to speak, we can kind of quickly get back up to speed, right? And, and it's been my impression that we have all been concerned about increasing the availability of housing across the spectrum, across all of them, not just, not just 80% and less, not just 200 or 300 and above, but the whole thing. And part of that was, you know, expanding housing choice, and this is something we want to do, and so, but this seems mushy, I guess, in that it doesn't necessarily say, hey, this is what we want to do, we're going to give some incentives. And, and I've heard in the past about incentive programs, it just didn't work, and they didn't lead to, no one took the incentive because it wasn't attractive enough or whatever. And I want to make sure that that, that doesn't get us where we were, we've been appearing that we, where we want to go. So I was just trying to kind of make that a little firmer point somehow, and don't necessarily intend to belabor it or anything, but that's, that's where I'm, that's how I'm looking at it.
I feel like the same way. I had this meeting with staff, and we talked about how there's no teeth in anything, it, everything is mushy, and that was the word I used. And I think that that's kind of the way the comp plan is, it's kind of a general feeling of what we want. And so I, I didn't think to move it, to take it any farther than that, but maybe it's a good consideration.
So there are two things that we've tried to do in this document, and they've evolved for exactly the comments that you're making tonight, is sort of, we want to be able to get back into this quickly and right up to speed fast, quickly. We want people to hear some of the themes that we were talking about. So one is, look at that examples column, and if there's a type of diversity you're not seeing here that you think this community should be looking at, I would suggest that's a potential edit there. The other is, we added the themes text in the body of the report, where we attempted to take some of your conversation and the words and put that into the words part, that introduced the top priorities, your top strategies. So those are two different places that we didn't used to do in the past, that we've now added exactly, you know, this thing doesn't have that much teeth, but you want it to have some clarity and some direction so that you can get right into the work, you know, so that it's like you remember the detail you talked about. So that's the format we've used here, and I'm one, and I'm hoping that maybe through those two tools, the things you're raising here can give it the teeth or the detail that you're looking for. And if not, then we have to figure something else.
I would, I guess I'd also offer that I perceive this document to be a suggestion in general. It's not an enforceable document in any way that I can see. So you really can say any words you want, but unless you have an enforceable document like ordinance, when you have ordinance, you know, and you create ordinance code, you can say "require," you can say "shall," "will," you can use those kind of words, and that results in an action because it's enforceable. This is, is a plan at a very high level, and the only extent of enforcement, I think, is kind of against either ourselves or staff to say, do this. But I don't know if that's really the intent of what you guys are talking about. What you're saying is, we really actually want this, right? An emphasis, but in the end, I'm not sure that that differs much from the suggestion because it's not really enforceable anyway.
And, I think, oh, sorry, I apologize.
This is the, I feel like this is the document where we say, we will create the code where we will say, "require," "shall," "will." This is sort of that intermediary playing.
In the examples, yeah.
Commissioner Baughman, thank you for those comments, because that's exactly correct. And again, I'm going to probably be the example person tonight and provide these examples. A3 subdivision code update. That is actually a work item slated for the plan, uh, community development department to start working on. And that is a strategy. We're gonna bring that to commission with these updates, where you can make the comments, we want this to be a requirement, we want this to be an incentive, where you actually get to direct the development of our code regulations. And so that's how this document is used. And even before we start the subdivision code update, we have this adopted plan that we're gonna pull from, and we'll continue to reference through that subdivision code update. So you are all reassured that what you have in here as your examples are following through, are being least discussed as part of that update, so.
To add on that, uh, this is a demonstration of the timeliness column as well. So it's shaded for this one, because as Kelly has mentioned, it is something that we want to work on in the near term.
Okay, so I will make another call for amendments.
Sure, I'll go. Can I, may I?
Yes.
So I have three amendments that I would like to propose. And before actually I make the amendments, I just want to thank the staff. I think having the panel, the surveys, various surveys, you know, with our citizens, with the business, with the school district, those are very helpful. And I, I think a few months ago, I had put out on Facebook, social media as well, in the local Sammamish group, to say, what do you think about our housing strategy? And I think it was the overwhelming support, uh, feedback was that we need to have more workforce, workforce housing, affordable housing, uh, in the community. So I think, I, I feel really proud of the work that we all are doing to kind of achieve that goal. So just want to thank. So the first proposal that I'd like to make is with A dot three, the subdivision code update, with one of the examples in that. The current example states that we require street trees in front of all single-family homes. And I am proposing that we replace it by just saying that we maintain trees in the neighborhood. And this is because I think, you know, when we have that very specific example of requiring trees in front, I don't think the people who live on the water are going to appreciate that.
Where is that, Rituja?
It's A dot three.
Yeah, I got that, but where in the examples are you looking?
Yeah, like what bullet?
Oh, let me see. Bullet point four.
There you go. Thank you.
It's bullet number four, under provisions related to neighborhood design.
Neighborhood design.
Design, okay.
So what do you, so it says, require street trees in front of all single-family homes. And so what are you proposing, Rituja?
My proposal in general to say, maintain trees in the neighborhood.
I like require, though. Require street trees in front of all single-family homes.
In front of all single-family homes?
Yeah, I agree with what Rituja's saying, is that that, there are situations where that wouldn't necessarily apply. But I think part of this is also...
If you have a waterfront home, you're not gonna want to have trees in front of your house, for example.
Well, okay, I would hope that that would be implied, right?
I'd like to actually make a point of order. We need to have a motion made and seconded before we can deliberate.
All right, thank you.
Just make a motion to make the language change.
Okay, I move that we change the language of one of the examples under A3 subdivision code update.
Second.
Thanks.
There's a motion and a second to change the language in A dot three, related to trees. And now we can deliberate.
I think the street tree... Yeah, I think the, the lot size is so small now, that if your only sunshine is on the street side, and you, the other side is the north side of the house, and you're forced to have a street tree there, you're gonna hate that tree. The other thing is that if you see some of these subdivisions they're doing now, there's hardly a place to plant a tree in the front. And this is why I think it's important to have it for the drive-by person, but for the tree, it's a miserable place to be. Diseases happen more often when you're in pavement, when you don't have enough area for the, the tree to grow. It breaks up the pavement. The trees drip on the cars that are parked out there. And there, it's not always a popular thing. I like it when I drive through a neighborhood, have a tree-lined street, but I think to live under it is another issue. And I think we can't expect the guy at the desk to, if we say, you have to have a tree, the guy at the desk, the permit counter, is gonna say, you have to have a tree. And it's going to be there no matter what. So I think this is wrong. I agree with Rituja, except I don't think maintaining trees in the neighborhood is strong enough.
Yeah. Because I think the, you know, the whole tree thing, you know, in Sammamish, it's a, it's a big, it's a very passionate issue. I take Jane's point about the maintenance, I see that in my own neighborhood, you know, the placement of trees, and contractors are not always the best at placing these trees in the right spot. But yeah, I'd like, I, I mean, I'm fine with the language as it is. I don't see a need to really change it too much.
Along the themes of, this is a housing strategy with something like, establish street tree standards in single-family neighborhoods, and, or do you...
Do we have that? I don't know for sure, but...
We have, we, that is regulated under our public works standards. So that is an element of something that does get reviewed for building permits and subdivisions and et cetera.
This should be review, street tree standards, as part of, you know, code updates.
I would, I would agree with Commissioner Baughman, because I know public works standards require a, a grass strip and a sidewalk in front of each house already. Is that right, Doug?
I apologize.
I just said, public works standards, don't they require, I remember when we worked on them, they require grass strip. It's like four feet of grass, six feet of sidewalk, four feet of grass, depending on the subdivision.
Correct, depending on the street and the classification of that street, there are different standards, but yeah.
So currently a requirement already. So yeah, I agree with Commissioner Baughman, that maybe we can say something like, review tree, street tree standards.
Review tree, street. Review.
So let's vote on the amendment, and then we can make another amendment if we want? Is that how we have to do it?
Would you like to restate the amendment as correct? Okay, we don't do that. Instead of amending the amendment to the main motion, it could get confusing.
So before I make the amendment, I just want to make sure I have the correct verbiage. So, um, review street tree standards as per public works department? Is that what I should be saying? Or is that what the example would be?
I think we should just say, review street tree standards within neighborhoods.
Within neighborhoods, okay. Okay. So I move to amend the example under A3 subdivision code update. Require street trees in front of all single-family homes to be replaced by review street tree standards within neighborhoods.
Second again.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to change the language in A3. Remove the language that says, require street trees in front of all single-family homes, and change it to review street tree...
Standard.
Street tree standards within neighborhoods, did you say? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed, say no. And the amendment carries six to zero. Okay, so there's our first amendment. And you had said you had three, so go ahead.
Can I go ahead? Okay, so, so before I go to the second one, I just want to ask if this would be part of an edit that we would make or an amendment? So it's the example right below that, which says, require variety of household sizes in subdivisions larger than, larger than 10 single-family homes. And I feel the way the example is written, uh, it's almost like mandating that, or requiring that if we have a subdivision which is 10 single-family homes or more, then we should, you know, then there should be a mix. And I think what was meant was that, that the example, the 10 single-family homes was meant to be part of the example, and not just as a, you know, as a requirement. So I, I think it should be just an edit with the parentheses going before, you know, like the 10 single-family homes. And then a slight change of wording there, which it would be something like, require variety of household sizes in subdivisions. And then parentheses, for example, in subdivisions larger than 10 single-family homes, for each five-bedroom, there must be one three-bedroom. So I feel like it's an edit, but I don't think it should be an amendment, but...
Yeah, I feel like that's an edit, but, um, let's consult with the others.
Sure.
Edit? Edit?
Edit.
So I, I wrote that, so I hesitate to admit that anymore, but, um, the, the idea when I wrote that, which I, I don't even know, I was probably on a plane when I wrote it, but, um, the idea was just that some of these sorts of things, when you try to enforce it on someone with a small piece of property, trying to develop it, gets to be onerous and will be challenged, and is not reasonable. So it seems like if we were gonna suggest something like this, it should be more heavily enforced on a hundred house development, or a 50-house development, and less on a mom-and-pop development. Now, how we word that to convey that concept, which is both reasonable and durable, I don't, I don't have a particular, you know, passion about the wording, but that's the intent, is just that the larger the development, the more that this is important.
Commissioner Baughman, can I make one question? And it's kind of a convoluted question, but the state subdivision act allows cities to determine what, between a certain threshold of four lots and nine lots, they can draw a line between what's called a short plat and a long plat. And a short plat is a different process than a long plat. And in the city of Sammamish, our threshold is nine. So nine lots and below is considered a short plat, and above that is a, is a full subdivision. So might it be appropriate, since 10 is the lowest, the smallest subdivision you can have, might it be appropriate to say subdivision instead of...
Yes.
Or a long plat, maybe? That might be a little bit more specific?
And I just want to let you know that in Red, in, in couples, single-family neighborhoods in Redmond, they actually have a provision like this, that once you get over a certain number of household sizes, every, one out of every five has to be smaller than the others or something. So you wouldn't be totally in new territory in this reg, in this area, if you look at something like this.
So does this require amendment or an edit?
To me, this is an edit.
Edit?
I kind of think it could be an amendment.
It wouldn't be an amendment? Yeah, let's do that.
Yeah, because we're gonna put in the long.
You have a long plat?
Long plat.
Or I think we just say subdivision.
It says subdivision already.
It says subdivision.
That's correct. However, technically speaking, we deal with two types of subdivisions, a short subdivision and a long subdivision.
So we want to actually say long subdivision?
Then that's an edit, just to say long subdivision. Yeah, I would say that's an edit.
Say, in long subdivisions, there would be, for each five-bedroom, there must be one three-bedroom.
Well, that would still go in the example, I'm thinking. Yeah. So I think the way it would read is, require a variety of household sizes in long subdivisions. And then in parentheses, for example, in subdivisions larger than 10 single-family homes, each five-bedroom will have one three-bedroom.
Okay. Yeah, so we'll, we have to do an amendment, though, it sounds like, so.
Have to do an amendment? Okay. I move to amend that the example under A3 subdivision code update to state, require variety of household sizes in long subdivisions. Parentheses, for example, in subdivisions larger than 10 single-family homes, for each five-bedroom home, there must be one three-bedroom.
Second. Okay, so there's a motion and a second to change the wording in A3, related to requiring a variety of household sizes. And now we can deliberate on that if necessary. Otherwise, I can just call for a vote. Does anyone have? No? Okay. So there's a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say no. And that motion carries six-zero. Does staff have their wording on that? Because I didn't get the whole thing. Okay. Okay, third amendment.
I move to add an example under D2, senior housing, to add, evaluate and revise standards for property tax relief, such as exemptions, deferrals, caps, and pass-through benefit to renters.
Say it again, Rituja, I just got to D2.
Sure. D2, yeah, so I think, yeah, senior housing. So I wanted to add another example in there, which would state that, so it's basically trying to have something in there for property tax relief for our seniors. And so the, the wording that I have is, evaluate and revise standards for property tax relief, such as exemptions, deferrals, caps, and pass-through benefit to renters. So here, actually, I, I have a question on my, on this, I'll try, I'll wait, and then sure, can, can, are we deliberating?
Make a move, make a motion, because this definitely needs an amendment. So go ahead and make a motion.
Good. I think I already, you already seconded that, didn't you?
No.
No, not yet? Okay. I thought I said, I moved to...
Get confusing.
That's fine. I moved to amend to add an example under D2, senior housing, to add, evaluate and revise standards for property tax relief, such as exemptions, deferrals, and caps, uh, caps and pass-through to benefit renters.
Okay. Someone want a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to add an example in D2, senior housing, to evaluate and revise standards for property tax relief.
Can you explain that, Rituja, what you mean by that? Like, what, what that, what that looks like, in terms of how that...
So I think for me, when I read this first, and I didn't see this example, you know, there's been a lot of talk about, in our community, about seniors having, you know, the property taxes are going up and up and up. But there are certain relief that can be granted through the state on their property taxes, because of their seniority and other conditions. And I think...
Is that connect, but is it income reliant?
I don't know, I might have to ask Arthur on that.
Is it kind of like low income?
I think there's a county program that provides tax relief to owners who are seniors on fixed income, but I don't know the particulars. And I would caution, we don't want to create something that conflicts with that, because that'll just be...
Anyway, sorry, Rituja, go ahead, if you can finish your point.
So I, I think, you know, when, when I was out and talking to people, I think many people didn't know that that existed, that, that they had that option.
Yeah.
So I wanted us to, as a city, to be proactive in educating our senior citizens, and making sure that they have this option, should, should they require to use it. And I actually need more clarification maybe from you, Arthur, on the pass-through benefit to renters, on what that means exactly in terms of the property tax relief. But, but that is what I meant, really, is that we should...
Seniors, so tax, property tax relief for seniors who are on a fixed income?
Yeah.
Okay.
And you're talking about education, about existing programs, rather than creating programs that the city would, that the city would fund.
I think that is what it, that is where I started off with. And this example, actually, I got from the Kirkland City, their housing strategy matrix. So Arthur, you might be able to explain some of the wording around that, esp, like I said, especially, you know, are we as a city able to evaluate the tax property relief? Or is that something just, that comes from, from the state?
So it, there's different taxing bodies who are doing, setting property taxes. So obviously, you can't affect property taxes for other. I think what I've heard discussion of, and, is whether or not, in some special local initiatives, whether or not they set standards that would give relief or whatever, based on income and things along those lines, or, you know. So I think that way. But obviously, there is policy now, or in general, about a general property tax relief, but whether or not you could, when you're doing local initiatives, layer some more on, that's, I think, what would be the thing that you would be looking at, potentially. I mean, with the language you have. Now, you also mentioned awareness, which is a little different than what it sounds... which is a little different than what, it sounded like your motion was saying.
Right.
Does bullet point number four under D2 almost cover it? If you just added?
Housing options and services.
As examples, housing options and services that enable seniors to stay in their homes. It could be, make seniors aware of housing options.
Or tax relief.
Tax exemptions.
Attacks, tax exemptions.
It almost covers it now. Maybe just a couple more words would fix it.
That sound good, Virtuja?
Yeah, I'm fine with that. I just wanted to make sure that tax relief somewhere comes along as a educational.
Sure. And then you mentioned renters as well. Is that, is that an important issue for you, too? Or is it?
No, I think it gets covered somewhere else.
Okay.
Yeah.
So really, if we say housing options and services that enable seniors to stay in their homes or neighborhoods, parentheses, increase awareness of property tax exemption options, something like that?
Yeah.
Do you put that as an example?
Is that with an EG before that statement? After the parentheses? Is that what you're?
That's what, well, that's what I'm thinking. I want to make sure that's what you're thinking.
Yeah, that is what I'm thinking, yeah.
Or you could more simply say housing options and services, including property tax exceptions that enable seniors to stay in their homes or neighborhoods.
I like that.
Including property. Jane, what was that again? I'm going to make, note it down.
Yeah, let's restate the amendment again. Let's do that. Housing options and services, including property tax exemptions for seniors.
Okay. I'll restate, say it again. I move to amend an example under D2, senior housing, to state housing options and services, including property tax exemptions for seniors, that enable seniors to stay in their homes or neighborhoods.
Second?
There's a motion and a second to amend D2, senior housing, to say, including property tax exemptions for seniors within the example. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say no. So that passes 6-0. So we'll make that amendment. Okay. Roisin, do you have amendments or just deliberation comments?
The only, as I was going through it, let me just kind of thumb here. It is in B, housing theme, housing supply and variety. And it was just really on our list of priorities. And I know we picked the top three to make them the high priority due to the amount of little stickers that we had on our board. I just keep coming back as well to B4, transit-oriented housing development. And we have it as a medium priority. And it's just every time I, I guess when I'm driving into Redmond and I drive by the big development that's going up in Marymore in readiness for light rail that's going to come there in 2024. And I know we're not going to experience light rail up here. But I feel also in the backdrop of our big discussion at city council level on concurrency and traffic and all that kind of thing, I wished that B4 could also be a high priority. And, you know, if we had, if we were allowed to pick four instead of three, because I just think going forward, it's, along with housing density, transit-oriented housing is also a big thing for our city, because it's also going to help us solve our traffic issues. But I'm not sure we can change that priority, because I also like the other three that are there, and I don't see how we can fit in. So I just wanted to make that comment, that I wish the transit-oriented housing could be higher up on our priority, because I think it is a big part of our future.
You could make a motion to change the priority to high without changing any of the others, which would make it, that we have four highs.
So I, because I was under the impression we could only have three high priorities? No? Can we have more?
Should we number it 3.5?
We can just vote on it.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I think.
And talk about it.
Yeah.
Sorry, but. Okay. So I'd like to propose a motion to change the, on B4, transit-oriented housing development, to change priority from medium to high. Second?
There's a motion and a second to change B4, transit-oriented housing development, change the priority from medium to high. So now we can deliberate on that. And I'll be the first to say that I support it. And I, I don't think there's, I mean, we've talked about requirements, right? This whole time. And there's no requirement that we only have three. We just, you know, self-impose that. This whole document is a suggestion, as Commissioner Baughman pointed out. So I don't see why we can't do that.
Okay.
I wholeheartedly support transit-oriented housing development as well. And I think if, if, there are lots of examples, especially under subarea housing, that specifically mention that. So I'm hoping that once we start focusing on that, that that transit will also come along. And we make sure that we, that that should be a priority for our community.
Yeah.
It can even be a part of mixed-use design standards, but I don't want it to be under mixed-use design standards.
I feel like the more we can state it, you know, in different places, the more it can rise to the top.
I agree. Any other comments? Okay, there's a motion and a second to change the priority of transit-oriented development from medium to high. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say no. Okay, and we are all in agreement that that is high priority. Okay. Commissioner Baughman, you haven't had a chance to do any amendments.
So I.
Or provide general comment. I don't mean to.
Yeah, I know that we have all had a lot of discussion about the general concept of increasing density in the centers. And we all talked about the concept as well, that doing that, which is probably in the zoning maps and the comp plan, is part of a comp plan update. But having said all that, I still feel like it's reasonable that if we think that that's a housing strategy that should be on the list for the next time that the topic gets embraced, if the comp plan happens, if something happens that causes the comp plan to be open sooner, or if 18 months from now, we start talking about it, I still think that if we believe that that's the right thing to do and it should be on the list, then there is a reason, perhaps, to put it in here as maybe an example. Or we used to have follow-up actions and considerations. We've changed that to further evaluation. I think it could go under that column someplace. Or it could be a memo sheet item that says the commission, is it there in support of or not in support of that? That's really the only, I don't have any other amendments. And I actually wrote some language, we could do it as an amendment. But I'm not super, you know, tied to the idea that we have to do an amendment for that. But I also sort of feel like ignoring it is not necessarily appropriate either.
Ignore it? And actually, that was really the only thing I wanted to talk about tonight, are all the comments that we heard from the public.
Chair?
Yeah.
So this is where I want to now take you back to the report. We made a little bit of a stab at trying to do that in the theme section. And where we added a sentence under the, on page eight of the theme report, that is some underlined text, which is, "The city should continue to evaluate and seek opportunities to balance the available housing types." Now, that's not a really strong statement. But I'm saying another place you might want to do that, maybe you add its own bullet, you know, I made that a subset of one of the bullets under the themes. But the themes, part two, is another place where you might want to emphasize the discussion you've been having on that topic. So that may be another opportunity to consider.
I think, as a commission, we need to talk about, do we want it, do we want this information to go to council in the memo? Or do we want it to be a part of the housing strategy? I guess that's what I really want to hear from folks.
My feedback be that it should go as part of the strategy.
And do we want to phrase it as, make these changes when we start working on the 2023 comp plan? Or open it up and let's do it now?
I spent a few minutes writing something this afternoon. I'll offer it.
I'm going to butt in here, because I was ignored. I, you skipped over me as far as my request for amendments. I would like to introduce my three small amendments. And then I would like to go on with this other discussion.
Okay.
You skipped over me.
Oh, well, you had started, you had started in the beginning. Sorry, I was trying to give everyone a chance to speak. I did not, I did not mean to ignore.
You gave everybody but me a chance.
Well, I was planning on letting you speak at the end. I apologize.
Oh. Well, I have three little amendments here. A2, which I would like to move to add to bullet point number nine on A2, to meet neighborhood needs.
Okay, what is it?
Bullet point number nine, that's the second one from the bottom, to meet neighborhood needs.
Increase the production of multifamily and condo development to meet family needs? Did you say fam?
Neighborhood needs.
Neighborhood needs.
And I said that.
Wait a minute, let's do a motion, and then we can.
I would like to move to add to meet neighborhood needs to the end of bullet point number nine in A2.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
And there's a motion and a second to add meet neighborhood needs to the end of bullet point number nine in A2. And we can deliberate.
The reason I say that is that I think that this wants and needs coming from the people of Sumamish and having condos for seniors who live here and want to scale back, I think that this kind of answers that and goes in that direction. So I kind of like to add those words. Rather than having condos imposed on us from the outside, have it needed from the inside. And I wondered.
Seems reasonable. That seems reasonable to me. There's a motion and a second to add meet neighborhood needs to the end of increase the production of multifamily and condo development in A2. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed, say no. Okay, so that, we all agree, 6-0, that we will make that change.
On A5, it's a character issue, which is regarding infrastructure. And I think one of the worst things that we have regarding character in, as far as infrastructure is concerned, are retention ponds. And I would like to move to require that retention ponds be designed to enhance the natural surroundings and the proposed development, creating an amenity that is both safe and attractive.
This is A5, you're suggesting a new bullet point? Can you say it one more time?
Move to require that retention ponds be designed to enhance the natural surroundings and the proposed development, creating an amenity that is both safe and attractive.
I do think we have some, some iteration of that in the code, in the actual stormwater code, because I know we worked on that extensively. Your variation is a little bit different. It's a little bit more, it's a little bit stronger, which is nice. You're saying require, wait a minute. So you're saying require?
Need to second the motion. Second?
Oh, second.
Sorry. I just wanted to get the wording right first before we.
Can we get a clarification on who actually seconded?
Oh, thank you. Okay, Jane, sorry, can you, can you repeat the bullet point just one more time?
It would be a new bullet, and it would be under A5. And I would move to require that retention ponds be designed to enhance the natural surroundings and the proposed development, creating an amenity that is both safe and attractive. I think.
I think it's not always possible to create a retention pond that is a public amenity. I think we went over this a lot when we were talking about stormwater. And we ended up in some sort of, some sort of compromise. But I know it's not always possible to have that. So that would be something I would be a little bit concerned about voting for.
You could say consider or something, because I think it's probably one of the most, when you go out and look in the neighborhoods and you see these things, it's one of the biggest problems that we have. So to have it under housing seems to emphasize it more than just having it under a public works section. I think it would fit under H11 in the comp plan.
I agree with Jane. I like, I mean, I know we've done some updating on water retention pond design, but I do agree with Jane. I think it's, I always think they look like water prisons. So I, you know, I agree with adding that in there in some way, as long as it doesn't, it's not counter to current code that we have.
Is this like earlier tonight, when we used something like review standards? And then?
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. We need to do something about reviewing the standards or reviewing retention pond standards.
Commissioner had, so that way you're sort of knowing that you're reviewing what you have to consider those items.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful. Because I agree that retention ponds, I think they're a missed opportunity. And enhancing them enhances public spaces, no doubt. But I do hesitate on the word require, just because I know that when we worked on this, it's difficult to require every single retention pond to meet that requirement. So.
Could I restate the motion, then?
Yes.
Move to consider that retention ponds be designed, we'll make it mushy, to enhance the natural surroundings and the proposed development, creating an amenity that is both safe and attractive.
Second?
There's a motion and a second to change the wording to consider, or, sorry, add a bullet point to say that, to consider retention ponds be made, made more pretty. This gets hard for me as I get later, and I'm trying to think and talk at the same time, sorry. Okay, so there's a motion and a second, we can deliberate. The only thing that I would ask is that maybe we can say, review retention pond standards to meet Jane's goal. I know that doesn't make sense, but I'm just saying, if we say review standards instead of consider, maybe it will make it a little bit more concrete as to what we're going to do.
Chair, should I remind you about extending the meeting?
Probably. Oh, it's 8:40. So, see, when Larry's not here, we just.
Not here.
I know.
The meeting till 9 o'clock?
Second?
There's a motion and a second to continue the meeting till 9 o'clock. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And anyone opposed, say no. Okay. So let's, you want to vote on the consider one? Just do that, okay. There's a motion and a second to change A5 to add a bullet point that says we will consider that retention ponds be enhanced, to enhance the public space around them. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. Okay, and that passes 6-0. Okay, you have one more?
I have one more small one, yes. B3. I would like to remove.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Commissioner Garrison, could you please repeat the strategy number?
B3.
B3, thank you.
B3 has some locational criteria. B3 has some locational criteria that I would like to remove because I think it makes it wordy and limiting. I move that in column 1 on B3, that we just say develop mixed-use design standards and development regulations in city in city centers. Mixed-use design centers. Develop mixed-use design standards and development regulations. That's all. Remove the locational criteria. And I do that because I think it's limiting. I think it almost says that mixed use can't go anywhere else except in those areas.
Okay, do you want to make a motion?
I move to remove the locational criteria from the mixed-use design standards in B3.
Okay, second. Two seconds. There's been a motion in two seconds to remove the locational criteria in B3, mixed-use design standards. Any deliberation?
Is mixed use, I guess I don't know, where is mixed use allowed? Is it allowed some areas and not others? It seems like it is.
That's correct. Our most explicit mixed-use area of the city is Town Center.
Sure.
However, we have commercial business and office zones that do have residential capacity, so at the core are mixed-use zones.
So I guess my question would be for Jane to clarify that your intent is to, by removing that, is to just basically say, where allowed? Or are you thinking that it should be something that's applied more broadly?
I don't want to limit. I don't want us to start thinking of Town Center as the only place where mixed use can occur. I would like to think of it as being able to be expanded to these other areas. And that's why I want to just get rid of the locational criteria. It doesn't matter where it is. It shouldn't matter where it is. You still have the same coverage here.
I like the where allowed. At least. If we said something like develop mixed-use design standards and development regulations in city centers, where allowed?
I guess my other question is that I believe we probably have this already. And so, thinking about it, what are we actually trying to do? I mean, I don't, I like the concept, but it's sort of, now that I read it, it feels more like one of those reevaluate, because I'm, I know for Town Center, a lot of the, there's design standards for Town Center. There may be a problem with the concept in general, because we have design standards. Now we're saying develop design standards. I think probably we need to be more specific in our suggested strategy.
Or areas, yeah.
Further develop.
I guess when those locations are are named, it says including those. It's not saying that it's only exclusive to those areas. I mean, I could go either way on the wording.
Okay, I'm, let's do a vote.
I mean, it's including, but not limited to.
Right. Okay, I'll call for the vote. There's a motion and a second to remove locational criteria in B3. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Say no? Okay, so we all agree that we should remove the locational criteria in B3.
Test in the waters there.
Okay. So should we now go back to Commissioner Baughman's comments about the upzoning and downzoning? Is that okay, Commissioner Garrison?
Yes, I'm finished with that, and I have comments on the next one.
The biggest.
So brace yourselves.
Okay. Or braced. I might need more blueberries and almonds from Rituja over here.
So I wrote this, and I, again, I will just reiterate that I, you could hack it all up and it wouldn't hurt my feelings in the least, but what I was thinking is perhaps in, maybe like in A2, which I think was, I was debating where to put it, so I don't have it memorized now, but that was part of the, I have to go back and look, switch back and forth.
A3?
It's a subarea plans or is it A2?
Subarea plans for centers.
Yeah, I think you're saying subarea plans.
So this is what I wrote, and you, I offer it just for conversation, and if we want to do something, I'm certainly willing to do that as well. Under, in that strategy, under the examples or things to follow up on, improve housing balance and variety in Sumamish by prioritizing future planning, incentives, and related Sydney ordinance changes in a way that ensures any potential increase in total housing planned or required in the city are focused in centers such as Town Center, we can take that out, and others, and not in additional single-family homes. Now, you know, there's, the public comment has been a lot more specific and a lot more detailed, involves additions and deductions. I think a lot of that needs to be dealt with in the comprehensive plan. But at least here, we could put something in that conveys a focus on if things happen, right, if we have to make choices between development here, development there, if the next Growth Management Act allocation numbers are tough to negotiate and we end up with more than what we would like, if we have something here that says, if those things happen, and that's why I put the word required in there, that the guidance from the commission, if we agree, is that the way we respond to that is with increased focus on our centers, not necessarily piling on more single-family homes. Now, what this doesn't necessarily do in the details of what's been provided in public comment is that concept of downzoning. And I think that there's a whole four meetings about that topic that probably we shouldn't try to address here anyway, because it's it's complex and difficult. But if we could at least say that we propose that future additions to the numbers be focused in multifamily, then it gets us in the direction of a more balanced housing mix in Sumamish. Doesn't have a lot of teeth, doesn't have a lot of enforceable ability, you know, but it does make a comment that this commission supports that direction.
I actually think it's a really good start, because that's what I think is needed, is a good start. Not necessarily a change and not necessarily specific numbers at this point, but we just need to say something about it, and I think that, I think that gives us a really good start.
It's a good place for me to argue right here. One of the reasons I wanted to meet with people is to talk about what a large area Sumamish is. It's really huge, and we have these neighborhoods that are so far from Town Center and so far from QFC and so far from Safeway that you have to get in your car and drive. If we could plan the neighborhood subareas so that we could have enough density and population clustered to have services there, we could have so many, we could have all the elements that you're trying to achieve, all the small-town feeling, all the walking, all the transit. We could have jobs for teenagers, jobs for seniors. We could have all this happen, because our area is so big. When we focus all this energy on these three areas, I think we're making a grand mistake. And I am not for it. I would like to suggest that I'm for what the Pulsikne has proposed and for what the group has come forward with, everybody, all the public. But I think that if we include, I said something like this, require that all sub-area plans, Town Center, commercial centers, and the residential neighborhoods be developed or evaluated along with the next comp plan update. And that shall include housing balance and densities that reflect future trends as well as the needs of local citizens. I think that we have to get out of this mindset that we've got one center in this huge area that is Sumamish. We need little centers. We need little nodes that people can walk to. We need real neighborhoods. And I'm very strong on that. Well, that caused silence.
Well, I think, I think that does make sense. I think, again, sobering realization that I got from Doug a month or so ago is, or more, that was that the allocation that we have for growth is currently, these numbers we've been talking about, but they're not going to, it's not a static number. They're going to continue. And I think what Jane is stating is that it might be best to just realize that that number is going to keep ratcheting up and start getting out ahead of it and saying, okay, this is where we're going to end up with six or eight city centers over time. If we really want a walkable neighborhood and we want these things that we're all saying we want, the reality is, is that no one's going to walk 500-foot down elevation to get their groceries and walk back up home, so there's many factors that will push this development into these different areas, whether it's, you know, steep slopes, or there's already a bunch of sewer and water system there, right? Why wouldn't you want to build where that's already at? So I think that's kind of what we're what we're, what we need to realize, and so having language in here that kind of helps start that realization, I think is good. And not continue a mindset that we're only going to have one city center. After we get Town Center done, we're done. We're, you know, we're done. Well, we're not probably really done. We might think we are, but we're not.
I agree with you, Eric, and I think, just on a broader issue, I think residents at large are not aware about, you know, the GMA and our growth targets, and even if, and even if most people are aware of the growth target that we have right now, that that is an ever-expanding growth target down the line. And that growth is going to happen, and we have to really manage it, and we have to decide. We, Jane and I were in the meeting during the week, and we kind of were talking about this idea of like having kind of like a futuristic picture of what does Sumamish look like, you know, it's 2040 or it's 2050, this is what Sumamish is going to look like. Be it a visual one, or be it on a chart or whatever it is, to kind of say, this is, this is the overall vision for our city. I mean, I know that's a very, it sounds like a very or a very simple thing to do, but I know, but I know it's not. I know that's very complex, because it's to do with zoning and private property and how people develop their own property, but so I think our residents at large maybe are not aware of these growth management, these targets and this housing target that we have, and that it's ever-increasing and it's not going away. Like Eric said, it's not a question of when we reach there, we're done, and we can kind of shut the gates. That's not how this is working. That's not how it's going to work. So I think we have some work to do educating the public on that. And like continually educating the public on those targets. And what that really means for our city, and that we're no longer a rural community. We're in an urban development area, and that's how it's going to be.
Okay.
However, that does not mean that we can't retain some pockets of that rural.
Of course.
Flavor, right? That's, I think.
Right, of course, and that goes to the neighborhood character, yeah. I agree with you, yeah.
So as I'm thinking, I'm thinking that Commissioner Garrison and Commissioner Baughman's comments can be sort of combined. I mean, Commissioner Baughman, are you completely on Town, you're not, you weren't talking about only concentrating on Town Center, you're just talking about concentrating in city centers?
Yeah, so in real time here, I changed the language a little bit to include.
Because what I like about.
Increases in total housing planned or required in the city are focused on multifamily housing in centers and planned neighborhood subareas and not in additional single-family homes. I was trying to fairly simply include that.
Sort of combine it, and the part that, the part that I like is the prioritizing if something comes up, let's jump on that. Are you in favor of that, Commissioner Garrison, where it's like this timing?
I think there's a conflict in that, that you're saying in neighborhood subareas and not in single-family homes, because neighborhood subareas are single-family homes.
Neighborhood subarea centers?
Planned neighborhood subareas, yeah.
Sorry, what was that comment again? I didn't understand that. What did Commissioner Garrison just say about this?
That.
I think Commissioner Garrison is trying to say that you want, you want the more density might actually have to get right in the R1 areas. Is that what you're saying?
R4, R6, R8. We have a tremendous amount of those areas. It's huge, and I think just to come here and get on a 40-mile-an-hour highway and fight traffic just to get to my city hall is shocking. I would like to have a center out by my house, or a little, a place I could go, a place I could walk to for services, small neighborhood services. I think that would be wonderful, and I think we need to look at trends. We're seeing, what are the impacts that are going to happen because of Amazon and home deliveries? And we haven't even talked about that kind of thing. So if we could get that kind of wording into a statement that then I would go for it. I would go for having this broad based growth plan that includes the outlined areas.
I think my understanding, you know, from listening to all the public comment today and last time we were here, and also seeing what's been discussed in the community, is that let's, let's focus on the density first, and then, you know, like if we had a stack of permits that we would give, let's prioritize multifamily homes over single-family homes and phase that out. I think that is where I thought, Commissioner Baughman, that's where you're leaning towards. And I think what Commissioner Garrison is saying is that density should be spread throughout the city and in different.
That's not right. It should be clustered.
Okay, but throughout the city.
In other areas of the city, so that it can be incorporated into the neighborhoods so that they can have mass transit, so that we can have shuttle services and bus services to get those people out. Those are the people who are driving. Those are the people who have a long way to go. Those are the, that's where the problem is.
And I don't think our city's ready for it. I don't think our city's ready for it.
I'm talking about.
I'd like to have a motion to extend the meeting to 9:15.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to go to 9:15. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say no. We've extended the meeting to 9:15.
Where was I?
So you're talking the center, you'd like to see it driven to the center of these these neighborhood.
Planned.
Planned neighborhood things that we're doing. We want to go to the center of those. We want to create.
You can create linkages. You can create walking. You can create parks. There's all. There's all kinds of things you can do if you have the density. You cannot get financing for services if you don't have the density. So we can never have it. As long as we have these spread-out homes that go on for miles and miles and miles, as long as we have this sprawl, we can never have services for those people that they can walk to.
And it's not that I don't agree with you, Jane, but your concept, I can see it. But does, is that not an opposing view to how the city is progressing? Like, because right now, we have the wedding cake-type scenario where we have the density concentrated here and then we kind of go out like this with less and lesser density as we go out. And we're concentrating the density in a couple of centers and then we're keeping everything else, single-family or R4, what have you, so that we can kind of maintain some of that rural feel that we, and the trees and all that kind of thing that we like. So even though I don't oppose what Jane is saying and I can see it, but I think we've got two very different approaches to city planning.
I don't think it's opposing. I think that we, we're talking about walkability. We talk about walkability in this. We're talking about transitorial energy development. That would help create that. We're talking about parks and open space and linkages. And that would help create that. We're talking about using our cars less. That would help create that. I think what it does is it supports everything that we're trying to do.
Okay.
So I might ask to understand what is the opposition to Commissioner Baughman's statement or the amendment?
I think the opposition is that Commissioner Baughman's statement is more city center-focused and Commissioner Garrison wants it throughout the entire city.
Kind of in hubs.
I don't want density spread out through the entire city. I think there's places where you could reduce density, and I'm not supposed to say that, but you could reduce it over 20 years and reduce it through TDRs, reduce it through donation, land donation, reduce it through historical interests, reduce it.
I think actually.
Along arterials so that you create even more of a woodland feeling, more of a rural feeling. You have a better feeling. You have more of a contrast. You don't have sprawl. It's not even throughout. It's interesting.
What I'll ask now is for someone to make a motion so we can actually have a motion in a second and a deliberation.
I'll make my motion. My motion is to require that all sub-area plans, town center, commercial centers, and residential neighborhoods be developed or evaluated along with the next comp plan update and shall include housing balance and densities that reflect future trends as well as the needs of local citizens.
Sorry, I have a clarifying question. Does that go as an example in somewhere?
It is an example in A2.
A2?
Yeah. It would be an additional bullet point, as I understand it. Is there a second?
Second.
So we can talk about it more.
Could you read it again?
Yeah.
Require that all sub-area plans, town center, commercial centers, and residential neighborhoods be developed or evaluated along with the next comp plan update and shall include housing balance and densities that reflect future trends as well as the needs of local citizens.
I'm wondering if we can't put both? I don't see that they're so opposing.
Right.
What if we, what if we put Commissioner Baughman and Commissioner Garrison's bullet point in A2? Unless you think they're so opposing. But I don't think they're quite opposing, as you pointed out.
Yeah. I think just one more clarification with Commissioner Garrison's. I think, you know, when you say, require that the, that develops or town centers or sub-area plans be developed with the next comprehensive plan, what does that mean?
That's true.
When we, in another 18 to 24 months, we're going to start the comp plan update. And that's when these numbers that we're hearing need to be taken seriously and put into the comp plan. Our comp plan needs to be updated with the revised numbers to include the gaps, the needs, the wants, and the housing balance that we have been hearing about from the public. So we want to include that in that update. And that's what this is trying to say. But let's not limit ourselves just to the town center and the commercial centers. Let's also look at the residential neighborhood subareas that we've said are important so that we can help start to eliminate sprawl. And it'll take a long time to do that. That's going to take years, but we need to get it started.
Can I ask a clarifying question to the staff? So I assume the data that, you know, that has been presented today either through public comment or more updated data would, will be available to us when we start looking at the comp plan. Is that correct? And I mean, I just assume that that would be a given, that we would have that data.
Right. The next comp plan update will cover a wide variety of topics. There will be data and information and studies used to develop those.
So under the Growth Management Act, part of updating your comprehensive plan is doing an updated needs analysis. So the document that you had, that will all be updated.
Okay, thank you.
I guess what I like about Commissioner Baughman's suggestion is that it's if something comes up before the comp plan update, that's what I think is really important. Because it's a given that we're going to address all these things at the comp plan update. What I'm really concerned about is having the town center planned the way it is without enough units. And it starts to get developed and then there's no land left. And then we don't have enough units in town center to support what we need. And, you know, if we go along, you know, if we agree with Commissioner Garrison, which I agree that there will be tons of different subareas, then I guess we'll have more space there to look at. But I do agree that we need to look at the town center and increasing the number of units in the town center as quickly as possible.
We can always go up.
So that's where, that's where I'm the most stuck is that, what's most important to me is that we look at increasing the number of units in the town center, just at the.
For right now.
Just for right now. The most important thing right now is that. Just so that we don't miss that opportunity because it will take years to develop the subarea plans for other neighborhoods. And what we have now is a very good plan for town center, just probably not enough units to meet the demand. So that's what I'm most concerned about at this point right now.
I think Commissioner Garrison's suggested amendment is great. It's broad and future-focused. And I don't think it's unreasonable to do both in the fact that my intent, which I hopefully conveyed, was more about the more immediate.
Right.
Action, not necessarily the long-term plan, which I think, you know, you can do lots of things then.
Right. Yeah, okay.
So at least from my standpoint, I would.
Conflicting.
I would not be opposed to both. But of course, we're really just talking about what Jane's proposed right now, so.
Right, I mean, we're supposed to be concentrating on three to five-year timeline, but how you begin that timeline is also affected by something that you're trying to shoot for 20 years away too. So it's a little bit convoluted in that. It's hard to kind of parse those out. So it might be good to have some kind of.
We have both.
Near-sided and far-sided.
Yeah.
Language in there. And it sounds like you each take care of one of those.
Yeah, okay.
So we make the amendments again?
Yeah, we need to make an amendment to add both of those bullet points.
We could probably do them separately.
Yeah, let's do them separately.
Let's do them separately.
Okay.
We've got a motion on the floor.
Yes, Jane's motion's already on there, isn't it?
Okay.
Yep.
Let's, but staff probably needs verbatim.
No, but we, yeah, it's been, the motion's been made. It's been seconded, so now.
Okay, we can vote.
For the vote. And while I have the mic, you may want to extend the meeting after you make this vote.
Let's make the vote first. There's a motion and a second to add a bullet in the sub-area plans for centers, A2, that would, I don't know how to say this. Can I just say that it would to.
Include neighborhood hubs.
Include neighborhood hubs in the next comp plan update.
I believe it was require all sub-area plans, town center, commercial centers, and residential neighborhoods be evaluated along with the next comprehensive plan update and include, Jane, you might have to finish this.
And shall include housing balance and densities that reflect future trends as well as the needs of local citizens.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. Okay, so that passes 6-0. Okay, good. So we'll move on to Commissioner Baughman's.
If we can extend.
There you go. Oh, we have to extend the meeting.
No.
Motion to extend the meeting to 9:30.
Second. There's a motion in three seconds to extend the meeting to 9:30. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. Okay. Meeting's extended to 9:30.
Okay, here's my, here's my motion. Under A2, add an additional bullet point that reads as follows. So I moved to add an additional bullet point under A2 that reads as follows. Prioritize all planning incentives and related city ordinance changes in a way that ensures any increases in total housing planned or required in the city are focused on multifamily housing in centers and planned neighborhood subareas, not in additional new single-family homes.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to add a bullet point in the sub-area plans for center, or it's not for centers anymore. It's just sub-area plans, to prioritize density in the town center or other centers. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. And that passes 6-0. Okay. Are there any?
Did you get the wording okay, since I only read it once?
It would be great if Jane and Mark, if you could please email those to us. If not, we will watch the videos and make sure we dictate correctly.
Let's do email.
You have mine already.
Oh, well, thank you very much.
Okay.
I pose a question, given the length of this conversation and the breadth of it, that it feels like we should, in the document, under the section that relates to housing diversity and stuff, add a bullet in the text part that gets at these, that tries to, so that you're seeing it not only as an example in a matrix, but you're seeing it in that introductory text.
Yeah.
I'm hearing the terms balance overall in the community, future and existing needs and words like that. And it just feels like, given how much conversation you've had on it, I want to, it feels like it should make sure that that point has its own bullet and put that out there for your consideration.
Yeah, I agree. Does anyone want to make a motion for that? Does anyone want to make a motion to make that change? Let's see. I moved to add, add text within the plan that captures the two bullet points that we added to A2. There's a motion and a second to add the two bullet points that we added to A2 into the actual text of the housing strategy plan. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say no. Okay, so we will add that to the text. And I would also, I want to do this after, but if I don't, I will forget about it. I wanted to say that in the memo that we sent to city council, I also want to include, include our discussion and how lengthy the discussion was about these, these very important items. And one more amendment. Commissioner Brooks, do you want to move the historic preservation?
Yeah, well, I have, I guess I kind of missed the boat the first time around. I didn't know we were supposed to jump right into the amendments. I do have three tiny ones. And I guess I'll start in order. So the first one is on A2, under the sub-area plans we've been talking about. I'd like to include an example stating the need to focus the provision of net-zero energy buildings and kind of that type of technology so that we are really looking to the future and realizing the whole, you know, fossil fuel kind of peak and things like that. So essentially, I can reiterate, I'd like to move to amend the examples for strategy A2, sub-area plans, to include an example stating the need to focus on the provision of net-zero energy or net-zero buildings and techniques in Sammamish.
We have something like that under subdivision code update? Will that satisfy? We have something like that under subdivision code update?
Well, it's, it's, it's less of a subdivision land use thing and more of a building, building focus.
Sorry, as a reminder, do we have a second on that motion?
Second.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second. Now we can deliberate?
Yes.
So Commissioner Brooks is thinking this is more of, like, create a neighbor, a whole neighborhood full of net-zero type buildings rather than require certain code updates that require energy-efficient toilets, things like that.
Right, right. And, you know, maybe one obscure example that relates to the street tree thing, right? And maybe if the trees are on the south, that's where you want street trees to provide passive shading for your home and reduce, you know, energy use for air conditioning, right? So these things can start being interwoven together and create more richness. But I think if we, if we're not thinking along those energy conservation lines or along the lines of being able to put solar panels on the roof of the house in the future and then have it be off the grid or over the year, it takes as much power off the grid as it puts on. That's just better for our future overall. Buildings use 40% of the energy reproduced annually. And so there's a lot of opportunity there to make a real big difference towards, you know, climate change and all these other issues that we're dealing with.
There's a motion and a second to add a bullet in sub-area plans to include the need to focus on net-zero buildings. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. So that passes 6-0.
Our quick one is to include, under the same A2 sub-area plans, an example stating the need to focus on community environmental health and sub-area planning. So essentially, understanding that environmental psychology and these other things that these environments that we're creating have a lot of impact on human health. And again, it's kind of not necessarily what you think of initially when you think about the built environment, but it does have a huge impact on human health, both mental and physical health.
I think you said I move, right?
I, I'll.
Yes, you did.
You did? Okay. A second. Any discussion? There's a motion and a second to include, under A2 sub-area plans, the need to focus on environmental health and a few others. Say it one more time, right?
Focus on community and environmental health in sub-area planning.
Community and environmental health in sub-area planning.
Do we, do you think you need an example in there to highlight that? Or is it okay as, as?
Right, well, I mean, it's a, it's a, it's. Well, I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a broad area, a broad subject, and it's hard to give specific examples, examples within it that can continue to retain its broadness.
Sure, yeah.
And essentially, we're looking to realize that there is impact on our health, mental and physical health, our built environment has a lot of impact on that. And it can either impact it negatively or positively, and this is an attempt to realize that and learn more about it as we start developing these subarea plans.
Okay. Okay.
There's a motion and a second to include a new bullet point under A2, the need to focus on community environmental health and subarea planning. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. Okay, so we will add that bullet point as well. And last one.
And the last one is to, on Strategy A4, and this, this is, request is a result of past discussions that we had, and I think as a group agreed on doing, but it just kind of fell through the cracks. And so the best way to kind of get that dealt with is through this motion. And the motion is to amend the examples for Strategy A4 under Housing Repair and Preservation to include Strategy A8, Historic Preservation. I think, I guess that's
Second. And I support this, because I do remember having this conversation, that we would move Historic Preservation under, which is A8, to be an example under A4. So as long as everybody else remembers that, I think it'd be pretty straightforward.
Yep.
Okay. So there's a motion and a second to move A8, which is Historic Preservation, as an example under A4, which is Housing Repair and Preservation. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. And so we will add A8 as an example under A4. Okay. Is everybody done?
Chair Collins?
Yes.
Just wanted to make a comment that in the presentation, Arthur had mentioned that there were two suggested edits from staff, two examples in C2 and C3.
Oh, yes.
We just wanted to ask if there was any thought
Oh, that's right.
in terms of making a motion for that.
Yeah, we should just do that, because it keeps it clean.
Yeah. Yes, we want to do those. Do we need to make a motion?
Do we need to reiterate the text, or can we just?
Yeah, that would be great.
Do you have it?
So C2 would, the
Can they just say, as recommended by staff?
Yeah. So in C2, the proposed amendment would be to strike the second bullet, sorry.
Third bullet, isn't it?
Third bullet, yes, sorry. My bad. And replace with language stating, combined with other incentives in parentheses, for example, fee waivers, short-term property tax incentives in parentheses, in order to achieve greater level of affordability.
How about this? What's the other, what's the other one that we need to make a change to?
C3, the third bullet there, enable faith communities to, that would be amended to state, support use of faith communities' property
Oh, that's right.
to provide shelter and/or affordable housing.
How about this? I move to accept staff's suggestion of changing C2 and C3 as presented at our meeting.
Second.
All the, there's a motion and a second to accept the changes that staff recommends from C2 to C2 and C3. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. And so we are accepting both of those changes as presented by staff.
Should we make a final motion?
And the other? Okay, we need a final motion for the, no? Something else?
The motion is already on the table.
Right, we have that, but, so then there was a second. We just need to vote?
Need to vote.
As, on the main motion, as amended.
As amended.
Do I need to state all of the amendments?
No.
Ding. Motion and a second to adopt the emotion, the main motion, as amended. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. And we have adopted the housing strategy unanimously, oh, as amended unanimously. Nice work, everybody.
Chair Collins, if I may make a statement
Yes.
before we adjourn for tonight. I wanted to thank the Planning Commission for all of your work on this plan, on this strategy, Sammamish Homegrown. Starting last September and getting a recommendation to pass this on to City Council has been a heavy lift, and I know at times it's been challenging, but you have asked some amazing questions. You've come up with some really great strategies and should be very proud of the work that has been accomplished over the last year. So a real, just a true thanks from staff on producing just such an important plan to move forward into council. So thank you so much. And I do want to acknowledge Arch and our staff for all the work that they did. It's great to see a plan like this come together that tells a real story and recommends strategies to be implemented that can make a real difference in this community. And I just, I want us to celebrate a little bit tonight, so crack open the wine if you have it. Our sleeping aid, whatever you prefer, and just be proud of the work that you've done. So thank you very much.
Can I just say something, too?
Thank you.
I just wanted to say personally how much I appreciate staff, and I know how hard you work. So I want to thank you for always being there to answer all my questions and explaining everything so well, and I really appreciate you. So thank you for working so hard for Sammamish. Thank you.
I did owe that. These guys are always calling me, Shannon, do you know what, what are you going to do if this happens? And it makes me think of it, and then I have to strategize, and it's really helpful. So you guys are amazing, and you've worked really, really hard, so thank you.
The one I think is amazing is Paul Stickney.
Thank you, Paul.
He's been here every other Thursday.
That is amazing, too.
And done all that work, so thank you, Paul.
Thank you, Paul.
That's true. Thank you, Paul. Okay.
Can I, sorry to drag it out for a second, but I think there's a couple things that maybe should go somehow into the memo.
Yes, please.
So that perhaps we can
I'd like to move to extend the meeting to 9:37.
You have seven minutes, Commissioner Baughman.
No problem.
There's a motion, or was there a second?
Uh-huh, a second.
Second. Motion and a second to extend the meeting to 9:37. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. Okay.
So my, my two suggestions, and I was just thinking here while I was, while I was listening, so, one is, both of them are acknowledgements. One is an acknowledgement that all of the things that we've done didn't necessarily address the traffic effects that they may or may not have, positive or negative. Because that's hot on the minds of that particular group at the moment, I think it's important that we acknowledge that we proceeded. And really, the second one is kind of, is a little bit the same. It is an acknowledgement that, and I, this is me, and you guys can say yes or no, but I know that there is a contingent in our community, and perhaps on the City Council, that believes one thing about the Growth Management Act, and then there's a large group that believes something different. And I think it's probably important that we acknowledge that we understand that this question may not be resolved, but our work has proceeded as though growth is going to happen in the city of Sammamish.
Correct.
And so we've formulated a proposed plan that will deal with the growth if and or when it happens. So we're not, I don't, I think it's just important to acknowledge that there is that opinion amongst many people, that all of this is irrelevant, because somehow growth is going to be stopped. Well, that could be, but if that's not the case, then we've formulated a plan to address that. And I know that those are two reactions that certain individuals may have to this plan, so acknowledging those opinions may help them to give it appropriate consideration.
I agree.
Sorry. I quickly also want to state that I think in our strategy, we have taken into account also the improvements to the infrastructure that will be made along with these housing strategies. So, you know, we haven't specifically called out traffic, but I think that would be included in the infrastructure as well.
So what's the formal way are we going to do this? There was some mention about something, an email being circulated around for us to each have an opportunity to add a bullet point or two to this memo. Is that how it's going to go?
Yeah, let's do this instead of usually, usually it's just Larry and I that are on the email for the memo. So we'll have to do it in groups. Let's try to do it in groups of three, however you think that might be possible, but just an ability for everyone to be able to read the memo that is written
Yeah.
and to be able to make comments on it
Mm-hmm.
somehow without violating Public Records Act.
Absolutely.
Staff can look at developing a draft based on what we've heard, trying to memorialize some of the conversations
Thank you.
and then send it out probably to the chair and vice chair first, and then
Yeah, let's do that. And then maybe, you know, Larry can take three, and I can take two, or, you know.
Okay, that sounds good.
Somewhere, that way.
Sounds good.
Okay. And that way, everyone will have a chance to look at it.
Great.
And make comments.
Perfect.
Or changes, of course. Okay. If there's no further comment, then, further comment? No? Okay, yes.
I move
Yes. Oh wait, go ahead.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second to adjourn the meeting. The meeting is adjourned. It's 9:34.